I appreciate that. We woke up Sunday morning with snow.
I guess mine won't.
You see the red light?
Yep. Testing, testing.
The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 6:30. Secretary of Police call roll.
Dennis Sobolski.
Here.
Tim Boyd.
Here.
Bob Dorshovitz.
Here.
Stuart Pop.
Here.
Dan Callahan.
Here.
Bill Ikes.
Here.
And David Lattaway.
Here.
Everyone's here.
It's on you.
Okay, I'll speak louder, sorry.
I think you had your water in front of it. Um, the approval of tonight's agenda and Plymouth exchanges added. Saw that note about when Plymouth exchange.
Yes.
And where should that fit into the agenda?
That's the last item.
The last item?
On the agenda.
Testing, testing.
Under old business.
Old business B, yeah.
Yeah, so under old business will be.
Dennis, the lights are on, but they can't hear us on the mic side. The mic won't might have.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I don't think the mic won't. It's not on.
Okay, well, we'll try to talk louder. Uh, so we're going to amend the agenda, or be a vote for amending the agenda to add the Plymouth exchange as the last item under old business. So does someone have a motion to that effect?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to amend the agenda as stated, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 15th as submitted? Are there any additions or corrections?
Yep.
I don't think so.
Mr. Chair, I move, we approve the minutes of the October 15th meeting as submitted.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to approve the minutes of October 15th, uh, submitted, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. This is public comment now for any non-agenda items, so if you're here to talk about anything that is not on the agenda, um, you have your three minutes. You might want to speak louder, louder because.
That's what I was gonna ask all you guys to do. Um, I'm Dale Bernhardt. Um, a couple of months ago, I proposed to this commission a way to hold developers of property accountable to our wishes of preserving valuable trees. I called it a tree bond, and I asked this commission to consider it. Developers are very familiar with bonds, they know if they comply with our upfront rules, they get their money back. Developers want to make money, not forfeit away. The tree bond needs to be pricey enough to get their attention. If we truly care about our trees and cherish our Tree City status, a tree bond is a great way. So I guess what I'm questioning, what is the status of my proposal?
We had some discussion on it, and I think what will be, um, having something to that effect in the new master plan. It's something that would have to start with the Board of Trustees. So that would be, we have a series of recommendations that we've been talking about, and that is one of those, uh, suggestions to the Board of Trustees in the revised.
Great, okay, so you take it to the Board of Trustees, right?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Go ahead. Anyone else? Okay. First item, the public hearing on a 1435 Northville Road rezoning. And I believe we have a commissioner that has something to say about that.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I probably should be excused from this since I'm the applicant on that, uh, item.
Okay. Uh, well, in that case, we, the commission has to take a vote as to whether or not we allow that, uh, uh, excuse, uh, recuse, yeah, that was the word I was looking for, to recuse you from that. So has someone wished to make a motion to recuse?
Mr. Chair, I move that we, um, allow Commissioner Lattaway to set out this discussion, recuse himself.
There's support?
There is, I just, in fairness to Dave here, I'd like him to be able to stand at the microphone and speak, right? Instead of going out in the hallway, okay, good.
He will, he will. So is that a support?
Yeah, definitely, absolutely.
Okay, so, uh, moved by Commissioner Boyd, supported by Commissioner Ikes to allow the, uh, recusation of David Lattaway. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. So you are accused, recused from that. So Ms. Howe, do you have your report?
Yes, thank you, Chairs Sobolski. Um, good evening Commissioners, Liz Hart with McKenna. Uh, this is for a rezoning of the property located at 14354 Northville Road. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of their property from the R2A multiple-family district to the R1 family residential district. The property is a half-acre parcel containing an existing single-family home, and the owner is seeking the ability to expand or improve the house, which is something that's not permitted under the current R2A zoning. The rezoning would simply allow the property to function as the single-family residence it already is, and would bring it into compliance with the dimensional standards of the R1 district. Although the master plan designates this area for high-density residential use, the request is still consistent with the recent rezonings in the neighborhood, including the 2021 rezoning of nine nearby parcels from R2A to R1. The proposal aligns with the master plan's broader goals of reinvesting in existing housing and maintaining established residential character. Uh, the change does not confer any special privilege, rather it corrects a non-conforming situation and allows this home to be used and improved in the same way as surrounding single-family properties. The site can fully meet R1 requirements, and the zoning would match the general pattern of development in the immediate area. The planning commission, uh, the next step for the planning commission is to make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, and the available motions are to either recommend approval of the rezoning or recommend denial of the rezoning to the Board of Trustees. Uh, either motion, the planning commission needs to specify the findings of facts for that decision, for such a decision is based upon. Uh, staff is recommending that 14354 Northville Road is rezoned to the R1 one-family residential district, and so recommended for approval to the Board of Trustees based on the following facts of finding, findings of facts. Number one, a rezoning of this parcel to R1 one-family residential district will encourage continued investment from the property owner into the physical property itself in a manner which maintains the current character, furthering the master plan goal to preserve positive living environments. Number two, the residential use of the parcel does not change with this rezoning request. And number three, the site can comply with the dimensional requirements of the R1 one-family residential district. That is my, uh, presentation to you on this. Uh, I'm happy to take any questions, and the applicant is here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. And the applicant is here.
Good evening. See, even the board members get to go through this. Um, so I, uh, as, uh, the planners mentioned that Kelly, my wife and I are planning to do some renovations to this home. We're planning to make it our lifelong, uh, home, and we love the neighborhood, and we are trying to preserve the home so that the, um, there can't be any mass development on it. There's also, uh, woods on both sides, on two sides of the property that we like to try to maintain, um, where there's possibility if someone went and developed it as R2, they would, um, destroy the woods. The, um, uh, we also would like to see that the, because of the, uh, not being that R1, there are certain things on that property where we can't do because of the multi-family type of, um, uh, ordinances on it. So, we just, what we'd like to see, uh, the rest of the street on Northville Road pretty much now is R1, um, and people are starting to fix their properties up and make a great entryway to Plymouth, the Plymouth community. So we, I'm here, and my wife's here, and we're requesting a, uh, a recommendation from the board.
Thank you. Are there questions from the commission? Are we ready for a motion?
No.
Okay.
Just, just to be clear here, this is a half-acre parcel that's immediately next door, right?
I'm sorry, it's a half-acre.
Right, immediately next door, half-acre parcel to the house that is, you guys are occupied in today.
It's the property of total of the half, well, it's actually, uh, just over a half-acre of land.
Okay, okay. And if my memory is correct, we had a similar request in here earlier this year, probably back in the February timeframe, on the identical street, on the identical side of the street, right, that followed suit, which is consistent with, with houses in that area. So this is well in line with, uh, what has been going on in Plymouth Township in that area, right? So I just wanted to be absolutely, you know, certain, right, that it was, you know, combined .5 acre, or if it was the parcel next to it, he already owns both. So that helps clarify it.
I think a little bit of a history, the goal was that, you know, originally what is now Independence Village was a hotel, because folks thought that there would be an interchange, uh, ramp off of the freeway, and that's why they built the hotel, and that was zoned multi-family, because we thought, um, that's the kind of, um, buildings would go up there, but then that ramp never, uh, materialized, and so, um, the zoning that was there originally at that time, um, it's really not going to happen. Someone would have to try to acquire all those properties, because each property is really, um, they're limited in the size of those lots. So, um, that's why it has been upgrading, those people could not, um, you know, maintain their homes in a manner that they would like to. So that's why this situation created, and we're slowly correcting it.
So it's consistent with the character, the fact they want to protect the trees is also consistent with what the residents want, so this is very much in line with the survey responses, A, and what, what is going on in that street, B, on both sides, actually, so.
Correct. Okay. Any other comments? Clarifications? Is there a, uh, a motion?
Motion.
Commissioner Sobolski?
Yeah.
These items and the other, the next three require a public hearing.
Oh, that's right, that's right, you were forgetting that.
Thank you.
So we'll open the public hearing at, uh, 6:42. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this application? You can come up, and, uh, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Dean Tomei, I live at 42150 Clemmons, same street at the other end. Um, I've lived there for 30 years. I want to know if there's any intentions on splitting that property after it's rezoned. That's one of my questions.
Okay, well, I'll ask the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, we'll close the public hearing at 6:43, and we'll ask the applicant to address that question.
Can you repeat the question, please?
It was if there were any plans that you would split that land once it was rezoned.
Is what?
Plans to re, to split the land once it's rezoned.
Oh, definitely not. The, um, is the house actually currently sits on two, uh, two different lots, so it can't, I mean, we'd have to tear the house down to do that. The frontage isn't big enough to actually split it, it would have to be split pretty crazily, so it's, it's almost not possible to split it. So we have no intentions, we have already invested way too much money into it, especially the master bathroom, who Kelly designed. Uh, so yeah, we're, we have no intention, we're, you guys are stuck with us.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I move that, um, we recommend approval to the Board of Trustees that 14354 Northville Road is rezoned to R1 one-family residential based on the findings of fact in the planner's report.
There's support?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to recommend to the Board of Trustees the rezoning of said, uh, uh, application, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have application 2580, uh, special land use at 46301 Port Street, and if the planner would read the report.
Thank you, Chair Sobolski.
Thank you.
Uh, this, the applicant is requesting a special land use approval to operate an indoor luxury automobile storage, minor repair, and appointment-only sales facility within an existing building at 46301 Port Street. The site is located within a fully-developed industrial park east of Beck Road and north of M14, and the surrounding properties are all industrial in both zoning and use. The proposal reuses an existing industrial building with no site expansion or grading proposed, and all activities will take place indoors aside from the outdoor storage of one car hauling trailer when not in use. The proposed use is compatible with the scale and intensity of its surroundings, indoor operations ensure minimal noise, traffic, and visibility impacts, and the use remains consistent with the industrial character of the corridor. The master plan designates this area for industrial and light industrial uses, and the business model, particularly the appointment-based sales component, aligns with the low-intensity employment-oriented industrial uses envisioned for this part of the township. The site's natural features, including mature tree lines, woodlands, and the existing berm along Port Street, will remain undisturbed, no grading or land disturbance is proposed, and the enclosed nature of the operations combined with the site's existing buffers ensures that the public health, safety, and welfare will be fully protected. Public utilities already serve the building, and the use will not place additional demands on the minute's full services. Traffic is expected to remain very low with scheduled visits only, and the site's layout supports safe and efficient circulation. The applicant does plan to resurface the parking lot, just to improve ingress and egress to the site. Overall, the use meets the township's special land use criteria and complies with the site development standards of the industrial district. Approval is recommended with the conditions that all activities occur indoors, the customer's visits remain by appointment only, and that the single outdoor trailer be stored in a manner that does not interfere with visibility and circulation, and this recommendation is based on the following seven findings of facts. Number one, the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding industrial development and uses. Number two, the use is consistent with the industrial, light industrial designation of the master plan. Number three, no disturbance to existing natural buffers, the site does, remains, will remain unchanged. Number four, the use aligns with the intent and purpose of the industrial district. Number five, the indoor appointment-based operations protect public health, safety, and welfare by minimizing traffic emissions and external impacts. Number six, the site is adequately served by existing utilities. And number seven, traffic and access conditions remain safe and appropriate for low-volume scheduled site visits, ensuring no conflict with normal traffic operations in the area. That is fast presentation, I do believe the applicant is here, and I'm also happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
I won't be shopping here, just for the record.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
So do you want to tell us a little bit about the business and why you're requesting this?
So I currently have two other existing auto repair facilities. I'm sorry. And we are, you know, growing annually, and we are looking for a space specifically for the amount of overflow that we have currently. Basically, it would be low-volume, appointment-only, for classic, um, exotics and luxury cars, and with the addition of the storage as well, for some of our existing customers already. Basically, we need the extra space. Um, I've been in business for 20 years currently, and own two other properties doing similar work, with the exception of no storage because of the space that I don't have.
Are there questions from the applicant?
So are you selling cars or repairing cars, or both?
Uh, currently, we're just very low-volume sales, it's, uh, maybe 10 cars a year, and it's only the higher-end exotics and luxury cars only. I mean, we have no interest in selling high-volume, um, daily drivers.
The business is primarily auto repair, um, and, and sales is one of your, is a product line, but the majority of your revenue is from repair?
Storage and repair.
Storage.
Correct.
Approximately, how many automobiles do you have in storage at any given time?
We're hoping to have anywhere from 50 to 100, you know, of course, with your approval. And as the, um, volume of cars stored in inventory, we can add lifts to stack them on top of each other, of course, with your approval, if needed. We don't really see the need for that, um, initially, or, or immediately, maybe two, three years, maybe adding more, if needed, with your approval, of course.
So just to be clear, you, you don't repair or restore any of the vehicles that you have there?
So that's a good question, sometimes you could be storing a car for a client, and it might run into an oil leak or a dead battery, and that would be, uh, at a convenient for the customer to repair it and store it in-house under the same roof.
So there, there are minor repairs or maintenance is what occurs on that side?
Yeah, minor would be like, uh, tires, oil changes, battery replacements, things of that sort.
Other questions?
So you don't do any body repair?
No.
Okay.
How many vehicles do you think the building can house maximum?
Depending on how we lay it out, because it is 22,000 square feet with some office space, comfortably 50 cars on the storage side without having to jam, pack them, or, you know, have it unorganized or cluttered.
Second question I've got for you, um, storing the trailer, where would you store the trailer?
In the parking lot, most of the time the trailer's in use, either picking up a customer car or delivering a customer car. If it's not in, in use, we can put it in one of the parking spots, and the trailer that we have is a, a 10-foot trailer, it's nothing, um, it's not a huge car hauler, it's a single car.
It's, it's an enclosed trailer?
Correct.
So where, where is this trailer presently stored today? At one of your other sites, or?
Yes.
Okay, and what I, what I'm just trying to understand here is if we're only doing 10 sales a year, you're not bringing that many cars in a route, right? I'm just wondering, is there a better place for that trailer to be, right, stored than at this site outside, right?
Well, we also still pick up cars and deliver cars, because we do out-of-state repairs as well, so most of the time the trailer's in use.
So the building itself is fine, you're, are you gonna do much to it, or?
Uh, just clean it up. We actually like the setup with the berm and the trees, because it adds privacy, um, and we have no interest to try to bring in any clientele off the road.
Yeah.
So we like the, um, privacy and the, um, and the landscaping. If anything, we may add more if, you know, if need be, but I think it's, you know, it's perfect with the berm and the trees lining the property, and only one way in and one way out, it's, it's ideal.
Yep.
Couple of questions, where are your other two locations?
They're currently downriver.
Downriver, okay. And tell us how you plan to fix the parking lot pavement, because clearly that's the one drawback to the site as it currently is.
Sure, so there's a couple of different companies we dealt with, some of the larger companies, like Al's Asphalt, you know, these guys have been in business for over 50 years. They gave us a couple of different options, either shaving and milling down currently what we have, and sealing and striping, and if that looks good and solid, because it's been repaired less than perfect currently, so we don't know if the cap is just installed incorrectly, or if it needs to be completely removed and repaved. Whichever is best for the property, I'm willing to do, whether it's a complete tear-out and repave, or mill it, seal it, and stripe it, whichever is best for the property.
I presume you're going to remove the old bus that's sitting there right here?
Oh, yeah, first thing.
And are you proposing any kind of special signage for the business?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just on the, on the asphalt, right? Trying to do two inches, right? It won't last, if you go down four, it will last, right? You don't have to rip everything out, right?
Correct, correct.
That's my counsel, having just done the asphalt road in our sub last year.
Yeah. And with the site currently the way it is, it looks like they did put a cap on it, but we don't know how deep they, you know, so it's, it looked like just a quick patch job.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why it's already falling apart.
Yeah, exactly.
So we're keeping the trees as is, berms as is, and making it better.
And they keep it better, right?
It's a beautiful piece of land, too.
It really is.
Okay, well, with that, we'll open the public hearing at, um, at 6:55.
Do you want to make a motion? Can I make a motion? Open it to public?
Yeah, oh, that's right, we have to keep doing that.
Yes, at each one.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion, open this applicant parcel to public hearing.
Support.
Who made the motion?
Uh, Bill Ikes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Moved by Commissioner Ikes and supported by Commissioner Boyd to open the public hearing at 6:55, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this application? You have three minutes. Okay, they will close the, well, we have to have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close.
At 6:56.
Support.
Okay, so Commissioner Lattaway moves, and who's supported?
Boyd.
And supported by Commissioner Boyd, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any further discussion? Are we ready for a motion?
Yes, um, I move that we approve the special land use application, PC number 2580, for indoor vehicle storage, repair, and sales, with the condition that all activities occur indoors, excluding a single car hauling trailer that may be stored outside when not in use, provided that it does not obstruct circulation or visibility, and that such activities are made on an appointment-only basis. And this recommendation is based on the findings of fact in the planner's report.
I'll, I.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to, uh, approve the special land use for application 2580, subject to set conditions, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, good luck to you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Application 2574, 9409 South Main Street, Class A non-conforming designation, and if the planner would read the report.
Yes, thank you. Evening Commissioners, Laura Howe with McKenna. Uh, this application is for a Class A non-conforming designation. All non-conformities in the township are automatically placed into the, uh, Class B non-conforming status, which means that they are not intended to remain, uh, expand or be enlarged. The request here is to, um, uh, keep a residential lot, um, as a residential use, and to continue, that use and expand by adding a detached garage, even though the parcel is zoned the OSARC Ann Arbor Road Corridor District. We list the ordinance standards that are specific to evaluating a approval of a Class A, um, and those start on page two of our report. We find, uh, based on, uh, those evaluation criteria, that the site has functioned as a residential use for close to a century, and the applicant seeks to, uh, maintain this use and further invest in their property, and we recommend tonight to hold the public hearing and then to grant approval of the Class A non-conforming designation, um, for 4909 South Main Street. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Laura, can you, um, for the purposes of new commissioners and the public that are here, uh, what is the definition of the Class A and the Class B?
So any non-conforming structures or lots that exist in the township today are automatically classified as the Class B designation. So they are not desired by the township. They may have been allowed legally through a previous ordinance and grandfathered in, but they do not comply with the code today. And Class B uses or lots are not intended to be continued to expand. It is the hope that with time, those will phase out and redevelopment will bring the property or the use into compliance. There is a provision in the zoning ordinance that allows for the planning commission to evaluate those Class B non-conforming uses or lots and determine that if they are not, if they do not present negative externalities to the surrounding environment, that they can remain and can be continued and enlarged. So in this case, it's a residential use on an office zone property. Residential uses are not allowed in the office district. The applicant wishes to continue to use the residential property as their home and to build a detached garage, which is not allowed today. So this is really the only path forward if they wish to still remain in the home and build a garage.
Thanks for that additional information. And the applicant is here? Okay. Do you have anything to comment on?
My name is Gary Becker. Thank you for holding this new account. We purchased the home back in September 30th of this year to be our retirement home for my wife and I. One boy is already off to college, graduated from PSEF. The other is a junior at PSEF now. We currently live in West Brier, one subdivision on Mearland Drive. So we purchased this house to be closer walking distance to downtown Plymouth, hoping this would be our retirement home. Currently, as they see up there and now, the home has already been expanded by the previous owners. On top of that garage now is a master bedroom. So they've expanded it. The previous owners didn't even know this was zoned as OSARC. And when I started looking into buying this, my wife and I started looking into buying this property, I was looking to see what permits I needed to seek out and what my setbacks were and everything else to have a second structure. And that's when everyone realized, oops, this is an office space. But it's been used since it was, the property, I think, was bought in '37. And the house is, the original structure of the house is just still there, which is the two-story section you see there, was built in '38. So like she mentioned, it's almost a century now. And it's been used as a family ever since. We intend to use it that way. I will have a small office in the upper-level northwest corner for my small S corp, which allows me to be contracted out as a airline pilot. The garage I seek to, will eventually seek, if this gets approved, is Class A non-conforming, will be for personal hobby use only. I'm a shade tree mechanic, so I'll have a single-car garage where I can work on my Jeep. And the other half will be for a woodwork shop. And like I said, this is our retirement home. This was our plan. We purchased it hoping that this would be approved so we can continue to make it our forever home until we, till the earth is no longer ready for us. I appreciate it, you taking the time to listen to our proposal.
Okay. Are there questions from the commission? Hearing none, and is there a motion to open the public hearing at 7:03?
Not yet. I did have a question. Have you talked to the neighbor that's beside you, right? That has a house that backs up to?
I have not had the opportunity to speak with that neighbor directly. The one across from Marlin Street I've talked with, and he was glad to see that it was, that we were moving in as a family. But I have not had a chance to speak with my neighbor to the west.
But there's a street between you and them, right?
Not between the neighbor to my west. The street between me and the house that you see there is, yeah, there's Marlin. We're on, so he is my property and the property to my north. Property to my north is, I think it's Diller and Diller Attorneys. And that was a house, I guess, and it was zoned back when the master plan was redone as OSARC, as was my house that I own now in 9409. And so that is now a business. These two properties, the business to my north and my property, were just zoned as OSARC. No one knew it. The previous owners had no idea it was OSARC. I'm not even sure how it got roped into it, but that's neither here nor there. My immediate to the west, you can see the house in the back. The trailers are not mine, the trucks are not mine. Those were the previous owners. I don't have trailers. I don't intend to have trailers. But that property behind me was never zoned OSARC. They're still R1. And I intend to use my property as an R1 wood.
You done, Bill?
No, I just, as I look at this, and I actually went and looked at the neighborhood, I'm stunned at how nice that house is beside you.
I really thought it was going to be bulldozed when they put it for sale. It didn't get bulldozed.
I mean, it's a nice area, just in their backyard, backs right up to where this structure would be built, right? And it just seems...
They also have a second structure on their property, a small shed that is, I think, about five feet from the property line as well.
Yeah, they do. It's in the far northeast corner.
Northeast corner.
Looks like it could be a life-size playhouse, right? I'm not sure.
It's a garden shed. It's a tool shed, yeah.
Yeah, it's nicely done. I figured, man, before I did something like this, I'd actually talk to the neighbor and make sure there's, you know?
For sure. So this, we know that, I still have to seek permits for what I want to do with the property, but I can't do that until this gets Class A non-conformed. So we have, we know that if this gets Class A non-conformed, there are no promises. And at that point, then I can start talking with them and saying, hey, would you guys be okay with this? Is this something we have, you know, that would be in your backyard? Which is, right now, they would be able to see the structure, its roof, because of the vegetation that's there. And they've planted a bunch of green giant arborvitae along that, our borders, already as well.
I don't have any further questions, Dennis.
So is there a motion to open the public hearing at 7:07?
Mr. Chairman, I move we open the public hearing on PC 2574 at 9409 South Main Street.
There's support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pop and supported by Commissioner Boyd to open the public hearing at 7:07. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this application? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing at 7:08?
Mr. Chair, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to close the public hearing at 7:08. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any other questions from anybody? Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a Class A non-conforming designation for the residential use at 9409 South Main Street, based on the findings of fact in the planner's report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to approve application 2574, supported by the planner's report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
Pardon?
I oppose.
Okay. And Commissioner Axe opposes. So the motion passed. So congratulations.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your investment in the township.
Of course.
Okay. Actually, we have application 2576, the conditional rezoning at Ann Arbor Road in McLumpha. And if the planner would read the report, please?
Thank you. Application 2476 is for the northwest corner of Ann Arbor and McLumpha Road. It consists of a vacant 4.25-acre parcel that is currently zoned, the R1H one-family residential district. The applicant is requesting a conditional rezoning to the R1 one-family residential district. They propose to construct 14 detached, single-unit homes on the site that would be developed as a condominium, and that would require additional review should the conditional rezoning be approved by the Board of Trustees. As a conditional rezoning, the applicant must voluntarily offer conditions to the township. They cannot be imposed by the township. So during the review, there are several areas where we note, not recommendations, but offerings of further consideration by the applicant. But those are not requirements, and it is entirely up to the applicant whether or not they would amend their proposed voluntary conditions. This is a site that the planning commission has reviewed previously. In 2021, the township reviewed an application for this. It was called Town Place Corner Resoning. That was a request to the multiple-family residential district to construct 19 units. And at that time, the planning commission recommended denial to the Board of Trustees, and the applicant withdrew their application before the board heard that application. The following year, a second application was submitted that proposed a rezoning to the R1 one-family district for 24 units. The applicant at that time was proposing to develop the site under a cluster housing option. These were an attached product, up to four units in one building. The planning commission at that time recommended denial to the Board of Trustees, and this project was considered by the board and resulted in a denial. And now, 2025, there's a new application on the site, a different developer. Our review really starts on page three, where we lay out the criteria for a conditional rezoning. And we summarize the findings of each of those criteria immediately following the italicized print, which is the requirement. So for criteria one, is it in accordance with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance? The difference between these two districts in terms of use, there is no difference. They are both single-family residential. The rezoning does not intensify the use category in that it does not allow for other uses in the district to be added. It's all the same uses to be considered. It's rather the density and the dimensional standards that vary. So the proposed intent statements for the R1 and the R1H are identical. The permitted and special land uses remain unchanged. And we do find that the rezoning can facilitate planned development consistent with the intent of the ordinance. They have the exact same intent statement. Criteria two, will it further the goals and policies of the township's future land use map and the master plan? We find that it does. The project delivers low-impact, compatible, single-family homes in a predominantly residential area, although there are institutional uses at this intersection as well. The future land use map calls for low to intermediate density on the site, which is between one and three units an acre. The overall density for this site is 3.29, which is slightly over the three acres. But again, this must be taken in the context of at an intersection, which is a higher-traffic area. This is not an interior lot that is located within a subdivision. And we find that the traffic impacts will be minimal. 14 units is far below the R1 maximum that could be on this lot. The previous application did provide a parallel plan, which showed 32 units could be developed. And both Ann Arbor and McLumpha Road are designed for higher volumes of traffic. This is not even collector or local street that the residences would have access to. The project advances aging and place goals. At least 10 of the units will be single-story ranches, which supports the master plan's goal for senior-friendly housing. This is one of the voluntary conditions offered by the applicant. There could be, all 14 homes could be developed as ranches, but the applicant is agreeing that at least 10 of those would be single-story ranches. The applicant did complete a tree survey. Although this is one of our observations for potentially further refinement by the applicant. The tree survey notes that there are 393 trees on the site, although the tree survey does designate the different species, and there are a majority of invasive species on the site. However, there are quality trees throughout, and we feel that by limiting the limits of disturbance and maybe some different arrangement with the detention pond, potentially shrinking that and adjusting the lot lines, there is a potential to save a greater number of trees on the site. Criteria three is the zoning consistent with the zoning classification of surrounding land. We find that this does. We note that while the R1 district does allow for a greater number of units, the applicant is voluntarily limiting the site to 14 units. And for a comparison of a similar property, New England Corners, which is directly across the intersection, has detached condominiums with a 2.99 density, or dwelling units per acre for density. And this supports, you know, the development pattern that small clustered, single-family sites are appropriate at this intersection and can coexist appropriately. Criteria four is, could the requirements of the proposed zoning classification, that is, the R1 district, be complied with on the subject parcel? The dimensional standards can. And as noted on the concept plan, these minimum dimensional standards are often exceeded in different areas, whether that be lot size, lot width setbacks. However, we do think that there is still that opportunity to redesign potentially the stormwater detention and improve the pedestrian network to better meet the zoning ordinance standards. Our recommendation is on page eight. And as a conditional rezoning, again, the planning commission cannot impose additional restrictions on this property. The applicant has to voluntarily offer them to the township with a revised application. So at this time, we are not recommending approval. We are recommending the planning commission table this, hear the comments from the public, and then allow the applicant additional time if they would like to consider potential revisions to the site. We, the township received seven letters, which you have before you, regarding this project from the public. All seven were in opposition. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a couple. Back on the beginning here. You have to speak up. Bob, you have to speak up. I don't think the mics are working. Okay, back. Let's see. Let me find what I was looking for. You said something about, shoot, I lost my place. The fact that it was on a corner, what was the relevance of that? The statement you made that it was located near a high-traffic area? Or what was the relevance? What was the relevance of that point?
The relevance is that the site is bounded by two major thoroughfares, McLumpa Road and Ann Arbor Road. And this development would have direct access to both of those, as opposed to the property being located within the interior of a subdivision or sandwiched in with only one point of access somewhere else. When you look, when you look at the surrounding lots, the fact that this is on a corner lot with that access, direct access, and not creating additional cut-through traffic.
That's a good thing.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. It wasn't clear. Currently, under the R1H, they're required, lot sizes are required to be 20,000 square feet?
Yes, half acre.
So they could only, they could only put in seven units under R1H? Where did that, that other number come from?
Oh, the 32 units was from the previous parallel plan.
Oh, that was the previous plan?
In the 2022 application, yeah.
Okay. But they can't do that as a matter of right. As a matter of right, they could put in seven units right now without, with the current zoning, without any additional approvals, right?
Yeah, at least.
They got three and a half acres in there, it's a half acre.
Four, four and a half, or 4.25, so.
Oh, so they could do nine, eight or nine?
Yeah, potentially how they laid out.
Yeah.
But because this is a conditional rezoning, the applicant is voluntarily capping it at 14.
14?
Yeah.
Okay. So they have every legal right to do eight or nine, but they're asking to do 14. And in exchange for that, they're providing some conditions to, for it to become a conditional rezoning?
Correct.
Got it.
Laura, I want to just revisit that for a minute. The existing zoning is R1H. How many houses can they put on that property using the existing R1H zoning?
At least eight.
At least eight. If they were to use the cluster housing upgrade or try to use the cluster housing upgrade, would that change that number?
On the, under the R1H?
Yes.
Yes, I'll have to look at that real quick. It might give them a little bit.
Slightly higher. Okay, thank you.
I didn't catch what she said.
She said slightly higher with cluster housing.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll find the exact number.
I knew a number, I was listening.
Yeah, it's not a number.
Other questions before we move on?
Yeah, if we go back in time, in 2021 and 2022, there were denials, right? 3.63 dwellings per acre, 4.58 dwellings per acre, right? And a couple of us were here, right? Most of us were not. I just want to know what you guys recollect, right, is the deciding factor against, right, on denial? Just so we get grounded to where you guys may already be at on the history.
Well, it was too dense, essentially. That was the primary, that was the primary reason.
Too many units, which puts the dwelling up beyond the 3.0.
Too many, too many, it was too dense. Too dense.
And we're at 3.29 here, which is still higher than the 3.0 to 1.
Right. Just keep in mind that, you know, basically kitty-corner diagonal from there was, is New England Commons?
It's a phenomenal execution of what they did, just literally diagonally.
And they're just shy of, of the rate.
2.95.
But those kitty-corner, they're, they're touching, right? The units, some of them will touch.
No.
They're all detached. They're all separate?
Because these are separate. These are like the ones north of Beck, that Verona thing?
Verona Park, right.
Probably similar to that, yeah.
So you recommended tabling it so they would have an opportunity to look at the retention basin? Is there some concern about the drainage issues?
Not concern over drainage, but there may be an opportunity to reduce the footprint of the detention basin. And that would be explored with engineering. But by doing that, they may gain, they may be able to preserve additional green space or have more flexibility in adjusting some of the lots.
Okay.
And/or saving a few key trees, I think?
Yes.
So if they came back, when we tabled it, right, they could probably come back and tell us the quantity of heritage trees out of the 393, okay, that are there and the quantity that we protected and what the plan would be, right? Mr. Bernhardt's comment earlier on the public opening comments of trying to protect trees there in the township, plus the survey results.
And we, I think some of us have comments on the trees that we'll get to. Any other concerns at this point before we call the applicant up? Okay, it's the applicant here.
Oldie Vittins, Vittins Engineering, I'm representing the applicant, Bandali Hosari. And he is attending the meetings tonight. Yeah, I guess I could address a couple of issues. One of the biggest issues with the site as far as a conventional development is driveway access. If we have a bigger lot, a half-acre lot, we have to have access both onto McLumpa Road and primarily all of our frontages on Ann Arbor Road, excuse me. And, you know, the State Highway Department, because we're close to the intersection, they will not allow curb cuts out onto Ann Arbor Road. So, you know, that was part of our practical difficulty statement in our rezoning narrative, that it's just, it's just not possible to develop the property as it's currently zoned. You know, the only option was to bring an interior road into the site to get a bigger lot. We had, the only other option was to put the road on our north property line, which should be adjacent to an existing homeowner. And we didn't want to do that. You know, we wanted, as part of our plan, we're providing a landscape buffer to the properties to the north. We're also providing a landscape buffer to buffer, you know, the proposed homes from Ann Arbor Road. In fact, the State Highway Department, we do, the speed limit east of McLumpa Road is 45 miles an hour. The speed limit west of McLumpa is 55 miles an hour. And, you know, and I think there should be some thought, you know, maybe requests from the township at least between Beck Road and McLumpa. There's a couple of major curves that go through there, and it's, it's all residential. And there could be an opportunity. I know the State Highway Department usually doesn't like to drop speed limits, but if the township requests a drop in the speed limit, you know, that might be useful. Right now, they're bucking at giving us any access out to Ann Arbor Road right now. So we could satisfy the fire department requirements by providing a T-turnaround, but we think it'd be important to have that second access. And that's something in the preliminary discussions with the fire department, they would like to, like to see that also. As far as the detention pond, we have already tried to make that as small as possible. There's a detail in our drawings on sheet C8, which shows a terracing, which allows us to make the pond smaller. You know, by using the terrace, we get more, more volume. Again, it's a more expensive construction method, but that's something that the, you know, we've discussed with the owner, and he's willing to do. You know, there is a terrorist detention pond that's existing in the city of Plymouth, not too far from where the Tim Hortons is. There's, I'm not sure if they're condos or apartments or exactly what's there, but they do, do have a terrorist detention pond in the front yard area that, at least in my opinion, I look, you know, think that looks pretty nice.
I think that's the one, it's Starkweather?
Yeah, it's in that, it's in that area, yeah. And as far as the tree survey, the person that we hired to do that, I'm not sure if he's retired yet or not, but he was or is currently the city of Ann Arbor's arborist. So he's, you know, you know, does all the tree identification and, you know, recommendations for the city of Ann Arbor. And, and again, you'd have to look at his report, but a lot, a lot of the trees on the site are not trees that have to be replaced. They're invasive species and they're, you know, all trees are good, but these, these aren't the, you know, there are some very nice trees on the site. We'll take a look at, you know, maybe making some minor modifications to see if there's, you know, additional trees that we can save, you know, willing to take another look at that.
I have a question. I'm a little confused because you're talking about the access to Ann Arbor Road, that you're having problems with the state.
Yeah, we're, we've shown an access out there.
Right, right. But then I, I'm looking at the, at the site plan that you've, that's been submitted, and I see an access on Ann Arbor Road.
Yeah, and they, and, you know, we have had preliminary discussions with both the traffic engineer for the state, you know, for MDOT and their permit engineer. And they, the traffic engineer, you know, there's, because there's a crossroad culvert for the Tyler Drain, which is just to the west of our site, which is also going to be our stormwater outlet. You know, because of that crossroad culvert, you know, there's a guardrail there. And that guardrail would extend slightly into our drive area, so we'd have to relocate that. Right now, the site's, you know, there's a lot of scrub shrubs, and it's hard to see into the site. It slopes down as you get very close to the crossroad culvert, but the rest of the area is relatively flat. And if we do have a reduction in speed limit, and, you know, they haven't said no to the drive approach, but they're, they weren't very enthusiastic about it either. So we're, again, because this is still fairly preliminary, you know, we haven't submitted a formal application to the State Highway Department, you know, and they haven't, you know, ruled on it one way or another, but they, you know, they did express some concerns about an access at that point. We, we looked at other options, you know, to, you know, there is a funeral home on the other side of the street. We looked at some options of aligning the drive, but that was impossible. We would have had to have a big cul-de-sac on the site, and it just, it just didn't work out. There was just too many issues with that. You know, the site's fairly narrow, and to fit a full cul-de-sac in that area, it just, it just didn't work. You know, we probably looked at, you know, three or four options, you know, to see what we could do there.
So the site plan that you submitted was, is really very preliminary, because it's really subject, sounds to me like, subject to quite a bit more change than what we see.
Not necessarily. We do have to work, you know. Usually, you apply for a permit with the State Highway Department, and, you know, we also have to deal with Wayne County Department of Public Services, McLumpa Road's under their jurisdiction. You know, they did, we are aligning our driveway with the church property across the street, so that roughly lines up, and they were okay with that. So we sort of have a preliminary, you know, we, again, we haven't submitted a formal permit application to them, but they've tentatively approved the driveway location there.
I just want to make a point to, to the public out here. So our primary purpose right now is to evaluate the zoning of this piece of property. So when I refer to, or he refers to, the site plan, we have that, and I'm going to ask, can you put up perhaps page C1? So you have an idea of what they're proposing, but that could really change. Because if the rezoning was changed, something else could, that's permitted there may not look like this. Although in the conditional zoning, he's, he's saying he would do this, he would put no more than 14 homes. So you can see at the, at the bottom of that graphic, that's the entryway or exitway onto Ann Arbor Road. And then over to your right, that would be the one that is somewhat aligned to the church driveway. So this orients you to the property that we're looking at. But remember that this is in a very preliminary stage, and it's not our primary purpose right now to, to look at the layout.
And as far as the State Highway Department, if you look at, you know, we have a splitter island that's shown there currently. If they do approve the drive approach, it's going to be a right end, right out only, so there'll be no left turn out of that, out of that driveway there.
If they don't let you put a driveway there and you just have them McLumpa, you'll have to have some kind of a turnaround, I suppose.
Yeah, we'd propose a T-turnaround. I did a project on Ann Arbor Trail that Walt Menard was involved with, and again, it was a very narrow lot. And we put a T-turnaround in there because, you know, we, we couldn't fit a full cul-de-sac in, in that area. So I know the townships approve that type of, we would prefer, we very much would prefer that second access again. With the reduction in speed limit, you know, that helps. You know, so we're, you know, we're still discussing. And again, I think that, you know, they just took a preliminary look at it. I think if we cleared out some of the brush there and they saw how flat that area was until it gets closer to the Tyler Drain, you know, maybe the, the length of that guardrail is not, not needed that much. And also, you can reduce the length of the guardrail with the reduction in speed limit. So that, you know, we have some options there that we could, you know, propose to them. Again, any reduction in speed limit would have to come from the, you know, the township and the police department.
So is the purpose for the two entryways, is that a requirement of the fire department?
They, they would prefer that. You know, they didn't say no to the T-turnaround, but they, you know, it makes their, their life easier if we have two accesses. You know, they always, they always prefer that.
Is it still? What do you think in the size of these homes will be?
Your, your report says it would be about 1,000 square feet.
And, yeah, 1050.
It also says 2,200 to 3,500.
Well, that's, I think that was, I saw that number.
I saw that in the table, where the minimum.
That's the minimum required by the district.
Right. But it's, but I, I'm getting that, he's proposing 1,050 square feet. It's in that column.
I guess that's the minimum.
At, at least. At least, he's meeting the, meeting the minimum and likely exceeding.
I didn't see that in your report either.
So they'll be different sizes? I take it that the ranches would be smaller or larger than?
Yeah, the owner's looking at to do, you know, predominantly ranches. I did a project in the city of Northville where it was also, you know, duplex units that, you know, we were proposing use for senior house, you know, type housing. Those are three and a half stories, but they all had elevators. So we're not looking at putting elevators. So, you know, we may have, you know, depending on the footprint, we may have a couple of Colonials. We're going to try to do our ranch homes. We're going to get an architect involved, you know, shortly, and then, you know, start laying out some, you know, building footprints to see how they'd fit onto these lots.
Okay, the Vittins Engineering letter that was submitted on page two makes a statement under their paragraph called "House Design." "Express General Construction is proposing to build custom-designed homes in the 2,200 to 3,500 square foot range. If requested by a buyer, a larger home could be built. Homes will be a mix of ranch and colonial styles." So what, what is the, what is the minimum number? Is it 25, or 2,200, or is it 1,000?
Well, if it's, if it's colonial, you know, it's, it's going to be a little bit bigger, you know, because we have the second story. We, we don't have a firm, you know, we haven't designed a building footprint yet, so that's, you know, we're hoping to do that, you know, with the final engineering, you know, to get, actually show building footprints on there, you know. And again, in the conditions, you know, the owner has committed to building primarily ranch homes. We'd like to get a minimum of, you know, a 10 in there. We may get more, it's just we haven't designed the house yet.
I'm just trying to understand. Your letter says 2,200 to 3,500. Can we rely on the letter that it would at least be 2,200?
Well, we have the conditional letter from the, you know, the owner. So, you know, committing to the ranch homes, and those will have, you know, smaller square footage, because we don't have the second floor.
Okay, so for the Planning Commission's benefit, the letter from Vittins Engineering on page two, the statement on that page is not fully correct. Correct?
Well, I would say.
It's unclear.
Or it's in.
It's a contradiction, okay.
Yeah, this, the narrative was written before the condition letter, so.
So the entire letter from Vinton's Engineering, we just need to be cautious that this may not fully reflect the intent of the developer. That's what I'm taking away from this.
So are you and others concerned about the size of the homes as it might relate to the number of homes? I mean, why are we going, uh, not, not in opposition, but why are we going down this path?
I, I'm just trying to understand if we can rely on the, the commitments made in the letter from Vinton's Engineering in discussing the project.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm now questioning that paragraph. It makes me wonder if there's any other paragraphs in this two-page letter that would also be potentially not completely clear.
So you're, so you're questioning the reliability of the information that's being presented to us?
In the letter from Vinton's Engineering.
Right, right, okay, fair enough. My question is partly curiosity and partly, uh, if these are 1,000 or 1,100 square foot homes that are ranches, that's serving, albeit a small number, but a part of the population that is currently not being served.
It is.
Which might relate to the affordability of these homes for people.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, good.
With the T, um, style road, do you still, are you still able to fit the same number, the, the 14?
Yeah, basically, it would be the same plan, but without the drive approach out to, uh.
Oh, it would look similar, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so we just, you know, we really like to get that drive approach out to Ann Arbor Road, but it's, it's not guaranteed yet, but we, I'm optimistic that we'll, you know, with, uh, some additional discussion, you know, again, we haven't submitted a formal proposal to them yet, so they, you know, they've just kind of looked at some aerial photographs and, you know, some sketches, so we, we haven't submitted a formal plan to them yet, which should come later during the, you know, the detailed engineering phase.
If you want with a single entrance and a T, would that enable you to put sidewalks in on the perimeter?
Uh, well, we, you know, we are proposing a, a sidewalk along the frontage of Ann Arbor Road. Uh, I, I don't think the owner has an objection to putting a sidewalk on the east side of McClum, or the west side of McClumfa. Uh, currently, uh, when I drove between Ann Arbor Road all the way up to Ann Arbor Trail, there's an existing sidewalk on the east side.
Right.
That's continuous all the way up. There is, right now, currently, there's not a single sidewalk on the west side of, uh, McClumfa Road. Uh, if we do put in a sidewalk on the, you know, on the west, west side of McClumfa Road, it's gonna be only sidewalk on that side, and I'm guessing, and it's just my guess, it's, you know, that it probably won't get extended in the future.
It, it probably won't, but, I mean, this was a dangerous intersection when I went to high school. It was a dirt road, right? A lot of kids got T-bone crossing because of the speed limits. The fact you want a speed limit reduction is good for the safety, right? Being big houses there, right, is totally opposite to what's on the southeast corner that actually fits, right? Because we do need smaller housing, we do need retirees to be able to step down, number one. And the bigger the houses are, the less affordable it is, right? So if it's cute and quaint, like the southeast corner, that would help, because it gets to a price point that we don't have, and, and there's a whole domino effect, which is good for residents of staying in the township. Having a sidewalk is important, right, because people are, are older that are in this community, and having that speed limit drop is also, I think, a must, because it's still dangerous. They come up through a hill, it's hard to see the cars coming from the west. They get there really quick.
Work, yes.
Same problem we had in high school. And that's why a flashing light was put in, and that's why it became a red-green light, and, because it was all accident-driven, so, um, getting back to the single entrance may be prudent, don't know, but these houses being this big, right, we really do need ranches. I just want the developer to hear that again and again and again, because the survey's saying, first-floor master, people don't want to climb stairs, they don't want four bedrooms, right? And it's very clear from the neighbors that have, have spoken here with what's in writing, and I'm sure we'll hear from them at the microphone, that they don't want extra traffic down there, and the bigger the house, the more people are living in that house, and the more vehicles you have at the house, and the more traffic you have. But if it's retirees that have one or two cars, it's not that big of an impact. It minimizes it. So everything comes down to Mr. Commissioner Boyd's comment on knowing what this is going to be is extremely form, important for us as commissioners to be able to make a decision, and it's important for the residents that reside there, right, to also know also.
But we need reliable information.
Yes, yeah, and it's a very good point, that, you know, Commissioner Boyd and Chairperson Spolsky brought up here.
Um, a couple of, uh, one comment and one more question. Um, we're in the process of updating the township's master plan, and one of the recommendations that we are discussing, including in the plan, is changing, recommending changing the speed limits on both, um, Ann Arbor Road, in that section of Ann Arbor Road, to 45. So we're, we're looking at that from our perspective as well, and you should know that. Hasn't been approved by the planning commissioner of the township yet, but it is in our draft. Um, my question now relates to, you mentioned that you did not want to put a, um, driver, or basically a street along the northern border of the, uh, property, and that was one of the things that guided you to go to a more dense development?
Yeah, well, when we put the road in the middle of the site, you know, we can't, you know, have half-acre lots, because their depth is, you know, and it'd be really wide, so it just, it doesn't, it doesn't lay out.
Okay, I want to, I want to ask you, within just, um, maybe 500 or 1,000 feet of your site, there is another example of a access road that goes along the property line that is very similar to, I think, what would be here if you developed this site, is single-family R1H. And specifically, that is a, um, a three-lot development that's at the eastern border of, um, the Woodlor North Development. The street is called, um, Woodlor Lane, and to get to it, you go north into Woodlor North, you turn right on Wellington Drive, and then you go up north, and that street goes off the east end, and then goes directly along the back property line of those homes at the end of Woodlor, at the east side of Woodlor North. Can we bring up the, Bob, can we bring up Google Maps and show that?
Google Maps on that one, yeah.
So it would be very similar to what your, uh, this concern that you had, and of course, the neighbor next door would have a view on that, but I don't know if he's here tonight. If he is, maybe we could ask him. Would he prefer that with a R1H development as opposed to 14 lots with a road that's not exactly correct adjacent?
Where is it at?
Okay, it's in Woodlor North.
Yeah.
So we can find, um.
Your sandalwood.
Yeah, okay, yep, okay, go down to, you see where it says something to the effect of Bidwell Electric? Yeah, that, okay, right there on, go over to the left a little bit, Bob. Okay, that street right there, Wellington Court, and then it comes down Wellington Lane, down there. All those homes, that street is right along the back property line of those homes on Wellington.
Oh.
So it's very similar to what you would have if you put an access road along the north property line, and that would then allow you to develop this under R1H, I believe. So I would ask that you go look at that and see if that might help you understand what the alternative might be. And in that case also, Laura, we need to see a parallel plan that shows what would be, what the plan would be if we, uh, used existing R1H, um, uh, development.
So the ordinance doesn't require a parallel plan for a conditional rezoning, it does for a cluster housing.
Okay.
So the applicant can voluntarily offer that, but we, we have to be careful, we cannot require.
Thank you for clarifying, okay.
Never been on this street.
It's actually, it works really well.
I thought it was part of the sub, but I guess.
Yeah, it was added a, a number of years after the sub. There was a stub street that dead-ended it right at the end of the concrete.
Yeah, that's what.
And the developer came in and added that in and put in the three more homes.
Was that part, is that part of the, of the subdivision, or no?
It's a different piece of land. It was added later, or I should say was developed much later. Um, Woodlor North was developed in the early 1990s. These three homes, I think, were probably put in maybe around the year 2000, plus or minus. So my point here simply is that this land could be developed as R1H with a road along the northern border, and I think that it would be, um, I think that the, it would be more in line with the existing homes in the area. So that is an option that we, as a planning commission, need to keep in mind. And the developer, maybe that would allow you to look at another option as well.
But those would be larger homes at a higher price point, then?
Yeah, they, well, presumably, if it's R1H, it would be a fewer number of homes.
So there's pros and cons.
There's pros and cons. I also want to make a point to the commission, and also the public, that we are really interested in having, um, home, single-level homes that are more attractive to senior people, because a lot of people in Plymouth Township want to stay here. Everybody loves it, we all love this place, but they need to downsize. I would also make the point to the contrary, that in our survey, the single, if I'm remembering right, the single most desired piece of housing going forward is single-family homes on relatively large-sized lots. And in Plymouth Township, I don't believe we've had a development like that in almost 10 years. The most recent one that I'm aware of was the one that was across from, um, Picnic Basket, um, which was called, I'm trying to think what the name of it was.
That was a Pulte.
Yeah, it was, ended up being a Pulte, but that was approved in sometime in the mid 2010s. And so we really haven't had, in this township, in almost 10 years, a development of single-family homes on relatively large lots, which according to the survey is still the single-most desired type of development for Plymouth Township going forward. So there's two sides to this tale, and I want us to keep in mind both of those as we look at this.
Other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, Bob, if you could zoom in on the intersection of McClumfa and Ann Arbor Road, please, to show the southeast corner, right? Because success leaves clues on the smaller housing, right, and the execution they did. They're smaller, the price points were lower, and no, they, they are not touching, but to Commissioner Pop's point, they're very close in some locations, and they share commons in the middle. And the execution is, actually, it's, it's well-done.
So these are detached condos?
No, you're, you're in the condos, so if I was gonna go closer to the corner, Bob, just right immediately on that corner of, opposite Vermilion to the, to the east.
Yeah, actually.
Talking about New England Corner.
Yeah, there you go.
It's hard to tell because of the trees.
Okay, I have a map I want to distribute to everybody, because I want us to understand. The New England Corners development is significantly different than what we're looking at here in terms of its layout, so you could pass that down. But can we go back to that overhead view, Bob? I think, I think most of us on the planning commission think New England Corners is really well-done, but you have to understand, when you look at this, it's actually, the way it's laid out is the homes are around the perimeter of the development. Some of the homes access directly to Ann Arbor Road, some access off that access road down the east there, and some access off the bottom there, the, uh, the, it's called New England Court, yeah, down there. And what that leaves is a very large section in the middle that is completely open, it has a bunch of very large mature trees, I'm guessing probably 50 or, 50 years or older. So you have, you have an approach, but you end up with a very large area that's, in its remains in its natural state. In this development, we don't have that.
Right.
So that, I, you know, I want us to keep in mind, when we talk about New England Corners, it is a different scenario than what we're talking about here in terms of the way it's laid out and the amount of retention of natural trees in open area. So I just want to make that point.
I think there's only like a dozen homes in there.
Yeah, there's very few.
Isn't it, is it 10, Laura? It's 10.
You know the size of that piece of lane?
Yes, it's slightly smaller than the subject property, three-something, it's in the inner corner.
Some more.
Okay.
And we spoke about this, uh, earlier, about this northern Michigan home, uh, where they put homes close together to try to preserve a natural. They didn't do such a good job there. But then, when you look at Saddle Brook, it's another development within, just to the south of, of New England Corners, much bigger homes, condos, but they have a large open area.
Which is exactly what's on the map there, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Their, their price points are much higher.
They are higher, but it's the concept that we're looking at.
Yeah.
Are we ready to?
Well, I want to see if there's anyone else. Okay, uh, just give me a minute here. Is there a motion to open the public hearing at 7:54?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move we open the public hearing on PC number 2576, conditional rezoning.
I'll support.
Move by Commissioner Boyd, supported by Commissioner Axe, to, um, open the public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. So I ask you, you can just step up to the podium, you can form a line if you wish, you are, you have three minutes, and, uh, you can ask your questions, and then, uh, we'll collect those questions and we'll present them to the applicant. We ask you to be clear, concise, cogent, and civil, and thanks for coming in.
Hi, my name is Jim Bazwinka, and I've been a longtime resident of Plymouth Township. I live on Academy Drive. And, um, when I heard about the rezoning, my greatest fear was that they would put in something like Plymouth Walk, where if you go down from the Plymouth Walk, all you see are driveways and garage doors, enough of that, but, um, we have a very, very beautiful neighborhood, and I'm really opposed to rezoning, because that basically means a higher density, and I don't think this is the right place for that. Uh, you have to remember that the corner of McClumfa and Beck Road is a traffic mess at times. You've got, uh, twice a day during school year, you've got perhaps dozens of buses coming up. Uh, people are impatient, and there's, uh, oftentimes you have, uh, people or students running up and down McClumfa, uh, maybe to Hilltop or, and then turning around. There's an awful lot of traffic there. Uh, I, I just, I hate, it's a beautiful clump of woods, hate to see it go. If it's gonna go, I just really hate to see, uh, higher density of, of homes going in there. I, I think if you can keep it to a minimum, it'll be accepted, and, uh, uh, I'm not a great public speaker, but I, I just had to put my two cents in. Most of my neighbors feel the same way. We've got a beautiful neighborhood. I've seen two generations of new families come in with kids. I have four kids myself. And somebody kind of insinuated, are there nothing but retirees going in this place? No, I don't think so. There's gonna be a lot of kids coming in. Kids love sidewalks. I live in, uh, Quail Hollow, we got sidewalks. That's something a lot of other places don't have. I've seen kids ride their bikes up and down. It's, they're a wonderful thing to have. If you're gonna put a lot of homes in and no sidewalks, or minimum sidewalks, that's a, you're taking away from the kids. So, uh, I hope you consider what I, I have, and, uh, maybe try to keep the, the density of the homes to a minimum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add, after we hear from all of you folks, we have six letters here that I'll ask the secretary to present to us, too.
Hi. This is my, also my first time, so thank you for allowing public comment. Uh, my name is Brooke Hauser, and I live on McClumfa Road, about three houses down from the proposed development. Um, I've lived there for almost three years after dreaming about living there for a really long time, so it's very exciting. I'm also speaking on behalf of our neighbor to the left of us as well, who couldn't be here. Um, I was able to read through the master plan earlier and was really excited to hear all of the preservation of wildlife and trees being such a prominent part of that, and multiple proposals tonight have talked about that as a really important measure. There's a lot of trees on this lot, um, some of which are extremely old and cannot be replaced, so I want to encourage you to vote with the master plan on that. We understand that this lot is most likely going to be developed. Everybody wants to live. Everybody wants to live in that area. It's a beautiful area. But the amount of preservation we're able to do is really important. You've proposed yourselves lots of different areas, or ways to develop this land, without needing to be rezoned and needing to squeeze every single inch of, like, natural landscape out of the lot. It's just greedy. The intersection that is on McLumpa and Ann Arbor Road is pretty busy a lot of the time. This is very close to where the interest of this housing development would be, is very close to the intersection. I don't know how that would fare with traffic. There are times when I have to wait, you know, light cycles to turn left onto McLumpa. There's also no sidewalk, as people have mentioned. The, the density, it's above the recommended amount. I'd also like to point out that, once again, that developers of this land, they don't have to listen to considerations that are proposed by us, and I'm not confident at all that they would listen to those considerations. Why, why would they, you know? It's going to cost them more money. The New England Corners, I really, I like that parallel. Something about that property as well is that there's a huge brick wall that's walling off every single house, both on McLumpa and on Ann Arbor Road, so that acts as a sound barrier, which the trees do now. It's a safety barrier for traffic, for kids being able to play in their yards and not running into this major road right by the school. Yeah, in closing, just wanted to remind you of that. I know it's been rejected before for rezoning. I really appreciate the dedication to, you know, maintaining what McLumpa and Ann Arbor Road is now, and I really hope that you do that again. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to sign in, shake down, so the next person can sign in.
Good evening, my name's Jason Ramsey. I live at 9639 McLumpa Road, which is the northern property of this proposal. Our concerns are, obviously, the traffic. Even with the red-green light, there's been a lot of terrible collisions there. Sometimes the impact wakes me and my wife up out of asleep. There are 6,000 kids that go to school just a few hundred yards south of there, Pioneer to the east, and even the church at that intersection is not a school. There's a lot of kids trying to traverse that intersection. It doesn't always work out so well for new drivers. The proposed density is not in line with that part of Plymouth Township. Everything west of McLumpa Road is R1H, half-acre lot sizes, by design, by intent. The smaller lot sizes are more conducive to, like, downtown areas that have walkability, or older communities like Inkster, Garden City, and Westland. No offense, I grew up in some of those areas. But it's not conducive for this part of the township. The lot, obviously, you did a tree survey, there's a lot of old-growth trees in there. There's also a lot of wildlife, deer, turkey, owls, and just today, we saw bald eagles. So we're involved. I'd like to talk about the buffer. That's the first time I've seen the site plan. I was disappointed. I went to the building counter weeks ago, and they weren't able to provide me with that. Unfortunately, this property used to be, the property my house is on now, was on 10 acres in the 30s, and my house faces this lot. Every window of my home will look directly at the backs of those homes. My living room, my dining room, my kitchen, and my great room are just 45 feet from that property lot. So I'm not thrilled about, I can't turn my house 90 degrees and make it face McLumpa like all of my neighbors. My house literally faces right at the back of these four properties. The previous proposals back in 2021 had more of a buffer and clustered homes further west, and left a lot more buffer in front of my house to minimize the impact on, you know, my, my family and my house. So I'm not crazy about the density. I like, you know, 14 is a lot better than some of the higher densities. But I would like to see, I would like the board to consider the impact that would have on the immediate neighborhood, as some of my neighbors have spoke, especially myself, because, you know, I can't move my house, and it would be looking directly at the backs of these. So, and to the developers, if you do come up with approval, I'd like you to encourage you to put a lot of buffer in front of my house there. Maybe get those first two units, filter them down further to the west, because, like I said, that's just 45 feet across my short front yard to the backs of all those units. So that's all I have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mary Taverozy, 46649 Arboretum Circle. I live just off of McLumpa. Thank you for your consideration tonight. I know you want to focus on the rezoning question only, and not any of the many concerns that we might have about the proposed site plan, because it's premature. So I'll, I'll confine my remarks. I think this is actually an example of the worst place to approve additional density in this whole entire area. This is a very, very dangerous intersection. Having lived in this, I'll write off of this intersection now for three years, I have witnessed many accidents and near accidents from people having to slow down to turn, either into the church, out of the church, into the funeral home, out of the funeral home, into the development, the New England Corners. Obviously, those places exist, and we have to be able to let people turn in and out. But this proposed density, by adding 75% more than what is currently called for in the zoning, is obviously going to create many situations, whether they end, they end up with a second egress on Ann Arbor Road or just McLumpa. Many situations where cars will be slowing down to go in or out of there, and that's right, right beyond the intersection. So there's going to be a lot of slamming on brakes, and there's going to be a lot of, I think, congestion by being right across from the driveway of, of the church as well. So I think this is really the wrong place to do it. Also, I take exception to the report stating that both Ann Arbor Road and McLumpa are, are built for high, moderate to high traffic. If you've been on McLumpa Road, north of Ann Arbor Road, in the winter, it is not built for moderate to high traffic. They don't even plow it, really, north of it. They have to plow south to get the buses in to the high school, but I've lived there and waited two weeks to see a plow come up on the north side of McLumpa Road. Now you're going to add, you want to add, as they said, 75% even above the original zone density to that, and, and, you know, gosh help us, because the road is very narrow. Landscaping trucks and others who, who do service the homes up and down McLumpa Road end up making McLumpa a one-lane road half of the time. And so I don't think with, with the absence of shoulders and the absence of a sidewalk on one side of the street, that this could be considered a road that can be accommodating, even currently, moderate to high traffic, let alone adding 75% more density with this proposed zoning change. And I'll just put those out there, and again, I won't, I won't make any more comments about the site plan, although I would say, beyond New England Village, look at Arboretum. They could have put 50 more homes in there, but they decided to save the trees, have open spaces, have a cul-de-sac, and keep this area beautiful and bucolic. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nick Hauser. I moved here about three years ago. This is the first home I've owned, actually. Wanted to live in Plymouth my entire life, but it took me a long time to save up and be able to do it. So I'm glad I'm here. My wife and I both love it so much, feel very strongly that we want to stay here for the rest of our lives. One of the biggest reasons for that is, in this community, we do care about the trees. We do care about the wildlife. And I've experienced that so deeply in my home, which is just a few, you know, a few houses down from where this development will go in. We see deer come through the backyard, we see wild turkeys, and, and we love it. We think that's a beautiful part of the neighborhood that we're in. And obviously, a reason those animals can be there is because there are trees, and there are spaces for them in the area. So I think to do something like this, where you're going to tear down almost all the trees to pack in absolutely as many houses as you can in that small lot, I mean, that's not what I would like to see there. I would be thrilled to see what it's zoned for. You know, nine homes, eight homes, seven homes go in there. I think that would be great. I was also going to mention what the woman before me mentioned as well. McLumpa being characterized as capable of sustaining high traffic. I, I don't necessarily agree, and I think the density could be an issue for a road like McLumpa, especially north of Ann Arbor. It is not plowed. There are times where I go out there and shovel parts of it myself, so I can get the car out, or throw a little salt on it myself. I, I don't think it's really suited for high traffic to be coming in and out of a development like this, which, if I understood the plan correctly, it sounds like there may not even be an exit onto Ann Arbor. It may be only the exit onto that part of McLumpa, which, again, I just, I don't think is suited for it at all. The character of the homes that would be going in there would be very different to the character of the surrounding homes. And again, I would be thrilled to see what someone on the commission mentioned as being the most highly-desirable type of homes. Single-family homes on relatively large lots. If we put maybe, you know, six to nine in there, in that spot, like it's zoned for, I think that would be a beautiful addition to the neighborhood. But I think rezoning it so you can pack the absolute maximum in would not be the right thing to do, for all the reasons that I said right now. So thanks for listening. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Oh, sure.
Hi there, my name is David Bell. I've lived for about 20 years, kind of at Beck and Ann Arbor, just down the road. I really was coming here mostly to learn and, and view what was going on, because I made, it's a long story, I'll get into it, because of another development. I may sort of end up getting sort of pushed out of Plymouth in a little bit. It's a long story, that I'll probably come here another time. But anyway, so my, actually, there was a couple of things that I heard and saw here that I just wanted to make minor comments. And actually, it's kind of reiterating what a lot of people said. I'd be surprised if that T plan couldn't come up with something that fits the lower density, that works. I mean, it does seem to me that the township has been trying to force as many people as possible into the township, and that does seem, as a longtime resident, somewhat frustrating. But a couple of what seemed like, almost like assumption or fallacies that I just sort of wanted to add that would more, just kind of, sort of inform opinions of a resident. But I, I don't understand how, one of the statements earlier, somebody claiming that having more smaller units would mean less traffic than less larger units. I, I don't see that. That seems like a statement that doesn't make sense. And the other thing, I know everybody thinks that deer are beautiful, but living in the township with the deer destroying trees and gardens and everything else. I view deer in, I mean, it would be really nice to see the population reduced. So assuming that we're, we're helping the township by having more deer, I, I don't think that's the case. I describe them as like, basically, large rodents in, in the situation here. They're really destructive and annoying.
Hunting season is open, you know.
Anyway, I just wanted to point out that, yeah, I kind of mostly wanted to, you know, that some, some of the things are stated, didn't seem accurate, so I wanted to address that.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Sabina Ramsey. I am the neighbor to this establishment. I live at 9639 McLumpa. My property is two-acre lot, and it faces this four-acre lot that we're talking about. The McLumpa is a dangerous intersection. It took us 14 years of protesting to get a, a light there. And I'm a nurse, and I've ran to that corner every week for almost 14 years. Okay? We have three different schools in that area that are directly across the street. And then we have a huge college, the PSEP, that everybody knows about in this area, that has thousands of kids that drive up and down that road, and the buses are at that intersection, turning to go pick up those children at the school. So the intersection is horrible, even with the light. I wasn't going to talk, because my husband already spoke tonight, but some of the concerns that we have are the trees and the animals, and preserving those lots. On that side of the street, they're all acre or two-acre lots. We want that to continue, because you don't see that in Plymouth very often. You know, that's one of the reasons why we moved there, is to have a bigger lot. It's like living up, the piece of, living up north, but in the city. And that's what a lot of these residents want. And that would be taken away by building these homes. We have enough communities. We have enough of these condos. And I'm sorry, you know, I look at the plan, and I don't see that that being conducive with the area or the price range. And just to point out, if you did establish that land, that would actually increase my home value. So as I stand up here, I realize that, you know, this is not something that would be good for our, our whole community, the children that live there. There is something with the animals. Yes, they can be a nuisance at times, and eating our shrubs. However, what better education than for our children in that neighborhood to see those deer live, to see, you know, a live group of turkeys walking through? This is not something that they're able to see in a regular neighborhood, and this is something that they're able to see on McLumpa right now. But that would be taken away if this land was developed. Thank you, that was me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Deloneski. I live at 9855, about four doors down from this. Been there almost 30 years. We've revisited this several times already. Everybody there, I know it's supposed to be half-acre lots. I think everybody there has at least a half-acre, acre, acre and a half. I have almost two. My neighbor has three. I mean, it's, there isn't a house around there, and we all pay a premium, you know, to have that. To, to bring in some small little ranches, you know, again, I don't think we're doing it for the people. I think it's a financial thing for the developer. Let's say what it is. That intersection is terrible already, like everybody else has. I can't really add anything that everybody else hasn't already said, but these homes are not, I mean, we spent a lot of extra money to have these big lots and, and maintain them and everything else. To put something that's going to be, you know, a third of the size of our homes is not going to increase our value, it's going to decrease our value. And I'm, I'm actually putting a ton more money back into my house this next six months. And I just don't know why we keep revisiting this. I think we should keep it the way it is. That's why we moved there. And, and if they want to find a different location, I think that that's, there's a lot of locations that they can find. But that's all I have.
Thank you.
Do I have to sign in? Good evening, Kurt Heisey, 9054 Mearland. I'm right down the street on, off of McLumpa, south of Ann Arbor Road. I'm here tonight on behalf of some neighbors who contacted me who couldn't make it here tonight. I'm not opposed to, to developing that corner. They, they certainly have property rights that we need to, that we need to observe and honor. But this, this density arrangement has already been rejected once by the township board, I believe in 2022. This really is not much of a change from what the board rejected back then. I'm not so concerned about the traffic. We did secure the intersection light some time ago. As far as the, an entrance onto Ann Arbor Road, I'm, I would be very opposed to that. We've tried for years, probably at least 15 years, to try to get MDOT to reduce the, the speed limit on Ann Arbor Road. And remember, Ann Arbor Road is still the old M14, so it's still under, under the control of MDOT. And I remember sometimes they will say things like, well, be careful what you wish for, because you never know how they're going to rule on something like that. And we've tried, certainly with the schools there and other development, to no avail. I just think that the, the applicants should, should sit down with the planning department and the administration, and see if you can work out a less-dense arrangement that would help alleviate the demand for, or help the demand for senior living and single-family, single-story homes that active seniors are looking for these days. But certainly, at least half the number that, that's being proposed. It's been rejected before, and I'm sure it would be rejected again. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call, okay. Is there a motion to, oh, no, we need those letters writ. Last call? Okay. Is there a motion to, oh, no, we need those letters read. Say it.
Oh, here. Okay. All right. Read them all, or what?
No, you have to read, just a minute. I want to read what she said. She-
The Mann one, yeah.
The Mann one. She wanted it read, so read it, and then the others will attach to them in a minute. So read the first one, the one from-
Okay, so I have six letters that were submitted. I know you said seven. I counted six, but either way. There was one from Jennifer Mann, who wanted her letter to be read because she can't be here. "My name's Jennifer Mann. I reside at 46730 Ann Arbor Road West. My property is immediately adjacent to the west of the parcel referenced above. Unfortunately, I'm unable to attend the Planning Commission meeting scheduled for Wednesday, November 19, due to a prior family commitment. If I were able to attend, I would have spoken during the public comment period regarding the proposed conditional rezoning. I respectfully request that this letter be read into the record and included in the meeting minutes. The parcel located at the northwest corner of McLumpa Ann Arbor Road has been subject to several rezoning attempts over the past four years, all of which are previously denied. After reviewing the current proposal, I note it is substantially similar to prior submissions with two noticeable differences: parcel size and density. The current acreage is 4.25, a reduction of .8 from previous proposals. The developer is proposing 14 units. This density does not align with the existing neighborhood character, where single-family homes typically occupy one acre or more. Even when compared to the New England Corners condominium complex, which has 10 detached units on similar acreage, the proposed 14 units exceed what would reasonably fit. Based on recommendations of one to three homes per acre, 12 units should be the maximum, and that figure must account for common roads, sidewalks, retention ponds. Traffic impact. Traffic congestion at Ann Arbor Road and McLumpa during peak hours is already significant, particularly east-west along Ann Arbor Road. Residents between McLumpa and Beck experienced difficulty turning out of driveways and subdivisions. Adding more homes will exacerbate this issue. I urge the Commission to carefully consider how additional traffic will affect current residents. Retention ponds and flooding concerns. In the agenda packet for this item, Ms. Laura Howe recommended the request be tabled for up to six months to allow the applicant to consider reducing the size of the stormwater. Retention pond, I strongly recommend the site be tabled, not to reduce the basin size, but to study whether basins need to be increased. The pond located at the front section of our property is a tributary of the Rouge River. Over the past five years, heavy rains have repeatedly caused the pond to overflow its bank, resulting in flooding downstream and upstream through our storm drains connected to this tributary. Our property has experienced flooding in our garage barn across the culvert where our driveway runs. Additionally, the common areas of the subdivision abutting the western edge of our property has experienced flooding. This also includes the wooded areas along Ann Arbor Road just west of our property line. We request assurances that any development of this parcel will thoroughly study the hydrology of their Rouge River tributaries and ensure that any construction will not worsen flooding or create additional problems for residents west of this parcel. Thank you for your time and consideration." Okay. Another letter, Jessica Perkis, 9735 McLumpa Road, was opposed. Justin Perkis, 9735 McLumpa. Oh, well, that's her husband. He also opposes it. Isaac and Leah Kaufman on McLumpa Road, don't want anything there either. Jennifer Beck, I don't know where she lives.
Jaclyn Beck.
Sorry, Jaclyn Beck. She opposes. Brooke Hauser, don't know exactly where she lives. She doesn't like it either, so.
And those letters will be included in the meeting minutes.
Yep.
Well, not per capita. The letters will be attached to the minutes. That's how we've done it in the past, when they asked, they ask us to put it in the minutes, so that's what we do. We have the minutes, and we just say, we receive the following attached letters. They requested it.
Bob, what's your concern?
What's your concern about it? I don't have a concern about these particular letters, but that gives people the opportunity to say, we had serious problems with, you know, that and the Board of Trustees, because it gives people the opportunity to say anything they want without rebuttal. They can call people names. They can make accusations. And I don't think a letter should be part of the minutes.
But it's been- What's the Board of Trustees' policies? Because we can use that as a guide for us.
It's been all over the place, but recently, they kind of backed off on it, especially since names and a lot of personal information can be included in that if you copy the letter that are addressed and such. So they're kind of concerned about that factor of it.
So they haven't been including the letter?
Not up late.
Pardon?
And for the board, they actually, the only letters that are supposed to be put in there now are from the board themselves, and they have to approve that that letter can be attached.
So of the three-
But you could put a, you could put a statement in that says, you know, Mr. Smith submitted a letter that was opposed, generally opposed to the project, right? But you're not going to put the whole letter in there because he may be going on there and saying, Tim Boyd is a corrupt criminal who stands to profit from this.
You exposed me, Bob. What can I say?
Well, that's what happens when you put-
Yeah, okay. Bob, to your point, of the six letters, one of the individuals actually spoke here today, okay, which was the Brooke Hauser, number one. The other five aren't here, but the messaging is very similar and mirrors what the eight individuals shared at the microphone, nine, okay, if you include Mr. Heisey here, of common sentiment and issues that were met in general.
Well, then we should take a page out of the Board of Trustees, and we can just list the names of the people that submitted the letters and just say, they opposed it, they supported it, and let it be done. What did the Commissions feel that way?
Makes sense.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, all right. That's what we'll do then. Okay. So we didn't close the public hearing, so we have to do that?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, propose we close the public hearing at 8:28 PM?
Okay.
A second. Need a second?
Yes. Moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Heisey to close the public hearing, 8:28. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So the applicant is still here, and perhaps we should talk about the trees. So if we could get page, the L3 of that preliminary site plan. There's a lot of concern about trees, and we've looked at the tree study that they've done, and Commissioner Boyd has some comments on that. L3. It's hard to read. Luckily, we did receive electronic copy, and I believe that's also on the Township website. So if any of you want to look at it in more careful detail, you can look at it at the Township website. And if you're looking at a desktop computer, you can really blow it up and read it in careful detail. So Commissioner Boyd?
Yes. So typically, a tree survey would be a more involved study that would tell us some more information beyond what was on this particular survey. Also, the plot plan was very difficult to determine where the trees, which trees were being saved and what condition they were in, because typically, we get a big blueprint, and we can actually go in and look at the details. But just as some general comments, there was a pie chart on page L3, and that showed that 33% of the trees were in good condition, 51% were fair. And so combined, we had 84% that were good or fair. Poor and dead were, there were a total of 14. Just for comparison, this particular plot of land has some very old mature trees. And as a plot of land, the trees on this lot are in better condition as a whole than some of the other wooded areas we've had recently. One example would be the Crest Haven development, which is being built just south of Margate. What's the new name of that, Laura?
Plymouth Farms.
Plymouth Farms, okay. Their tree survey showed 0% good trees, 12% fair, 12.7% fair to poor, and poor to very poor were 76%. So I wanted to compare. It's not a complete apples-to-apples comparison, but directionally, it's pretty good. So on all of the wood site, we, 33% of the trees are in good condition. 0% were in Crest Haven. Fair to, fair and fair to poor, at Crest Haven, they were around 24% combined. Here, fair trees are 51%. And when you look at the definition of fair trees, those trees are actually, trees are in pretty good condition. They might have, they might be misshapen a little bit, but the generally accepted definition among the arborists is that they're trees that are thought to live, have at least 20 years of life left in them, if not more. Conversely, Crest Haven had 76% poor to very poor or dead. This site has only 14%. So, you know, the point I'm trying to make here is that, in particular, this site has a bunch of very healthy, very old-growth trees. And as we have heard from the survey that we did with the Township for the master plan, and certainly in all of the public hearings that I've been a part of in my role on the Planning Commission, I know many others here, the trees are a key concern of Plymouth Township. So in looking at this, we really need to think about, what are we doing to conserve the trees there? And looking at the plot plan, to the best I could figure out, it looks like about 30 of the 393 trees are preserved. So that's about 8%. The remaining 92% would be cut down. So basically, what we would be looking at is, you drive down Ann Arbor Road, which most of us do, you'd be looking at a site that's mostly clear-cut before this is developed. Not granted, when it's done, there would be new trees planted, and the developer has defined how many new trees would be put in, and it corresponds with the Township criteria. But old-growth trees are not easily replaced. It takes 40 years for a freshly planted tree to get to the level of a typical tree that would be in this development. Now, there was a comment about that the majority of the trees are considered invasive. Well, you know what? That's a consideration, and it's particularly a consideration if you have a piece of land that has a lot of vacant land. When you're looking at mature trees, that's a little bit of a different situation. Of the 10 most common trees in this site, to the best of my ability, it looked like we had two that were really considered invasive, black locust and box elder. And black locust was the single most predominant, and box elder was the third most. But we had eight other types of trees in the 10 that generally are considered not invasive. Now, there were a couple of them where the particular type of tree is considered invasive, but when you actually look at the species of the tree on this site, that particular species is not invasive. So I want us to be careful that we, when we look at this comment about invasive, that we look at it in more detail. And a mature tree that is considered invasive is still a lot more valuable than no tree at all, in my point of view. So on this particular case, I think it's really important that we look at this and try to figure out, what can we do to preserve a significant proportion of these mature trees as opposed to just the 10%, roughly, that it appears would be preserved under the proposed plan? Are there any questions from the Commissioners on that?
I have one comment, but, you know, buckthorn, and there are buckthorns in that survey. And my understanding is buckthorn oozes some kind of, I don't want to call it poison, but some kind of substance that really destroys, you know, the close-by trees so that it can become more invasive. So I would say the buckthorn probably would win that fight.
Yeah.
You know, so the buckthorn, I think, is truly a very invasive.
It is, and we really need to do everything we can to get rid of buckthorn. But buckthorn also, in a site like this, because of how mature the woods are, I suspect buckthorn tends to be a shrubby tree. It grows up to about 20 feet tall, and that's about the extent of it. So I, again, there was no information provided on buckthorn in the survey that I saw. I'm sure there's plenty of buckthorn in there, but it's probably very short height compared to the other trees there. I also wanted to make one more comment. Thank you. Of the 30 trees that are preserved, and again, it's hard to tell from this particular map, but to the best of our ability, it appears that most of the trees that are preserved are in the northwest corner of the development, the western border, and a few of them along the very north, the northeast. And then there are three trees that are preserved directly along Ann Arbor Road. So basically, it's that upper left. You can see those, some of those circles there. And you got to be careful, because most of the circles have Xs, but some of those on that upper-left corner, and then there's a few along the top middle that are preserved. And then there's three right in the center along Ann Arbor Road. All the rest of those trees, folks, are going away. So as we look at this development, we need to really ask ourselves, are we reflecting the will of the community in how we treat this site? And I will also say, the property owner has rights, and we, as a Planning Commission, have to consider those rights as well. But I want to make sure that we try to find a solution that respects the property owner's rights, but also reflects the community's strong desire in Plymouth Township to retain as much of our natural features as we can, particularly our mature trees.
So I ask the applicant to come forward. I don't know if you have reaction to any of this, but you can see the direction that, you know, or the concern that we have about what's been presented.
Well, we'll take the comments under advisement. Again, it is a difficult site to develop, you know, as it's currently zoned. We're not going to get a lot of cooperation from the State Highway Department. I think the one property owner to the north wasn't, you know, already said that, you know, his living room and everything looks into our site. And if we put a road on that north property line, which, and again, we'd still have to, you know, align with the church property. When we were looking at, you know, the rezoning, you know, we have commercial property, the funeral home on the south, you know, we have, you know, a church on the east, which is, you know, not a real intensive use except on weekends. So, but on weekends, it's a very intensive use. So we thought that this rezoning would be sort of a good transition from, you know, the more intensive uses to the less intensive uses to the north and west. You know, again, we're not going to get driveway curb cuts out to McLumpa Road or to Ann Arbor Road. And, you know, we're very limited on the options of where we could put access drives in. And again, you know, the immediate impact is mostly to the neighbor to the north. And, you know, putting a road there, you know, which should, we could get bigger lots with that and probably save a few more trees. But that's, you know, that's going to cause the most impact on his site, and he's an immediate neighbor. Yeah, we were looking, yeah, we were looking at a site, White Pine Court. We were looking at, you know, doing similar-style homes. It's also along Ann Arbor Road. You know, they're mostly, you know, I think they're all ranch homes on that, so we're looking at, you know, doing a similar development to that. That property is maybe slightly, slightly- That property is maybe slightly, slightly bigger than ours, but not, you know, it's in the ballpark, anyway.
Yeah, I think, well, I think, I believe that funeral home is not commercial. Laura, I think it's residential, and it's there because of a special land use.
Yeah, you're allowed to have those.
Those that use.
Community-oriented uses.
Right, and that's probably true with the church as well.
It is.
So, just to make that correction.
No, but it is a more intensive use, residential.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, certainly, I mean, I think we support, you know, having that type of housing that you're proposing, you know, the ranches, because we also hear from seniors, you know, they want to downsize, but they love the community. So, and it's a pro and con kind of a thing, but we hear this time and time again about the trees and the natural beauty, and that's what people brought into this community. That's what they like. And so we'd like to see the development sustain that, that character. So you just have to, you know, be creative and see what you can save and see what the density is that makes it a financially viable situation for you guys.
First thing, I want to thank everybody who's here, especially all the neighbors who come here. Appreciate your time. I am very concerned about the development we're going to do. I am planning to have, like, 14 ranches, actually, on this property, just for senior. I am concerned the neighbors, especially the one north of my properties, to have, like, a distance with the tree. I try to save most of the tree north of the property and west of the property. If we go back to the plot plans, it's showing the street is going in the middle of the property, which is the house, it's going to be close to the, close to the street in the middle. We are saving all the trees north of the properties, and the one in northwest of the property, which is the most important tree you're talking about. And in the south, in the south of the property, we're going to have a sidewalk, and where's the bond, it's going to be like trees too. All the houses, it's going to be, like, full of trees in the backyard. This is our target in this development. I want to thank you, everybody here, and I'm looking forward to work what your recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, one of the concerns, too, that we raised.
My name is Ben Dani Husari.
One of the concerns that we've raised in the past, and applicants have seen our line of thinking on it, is to make sure there is enough parking. If they're marketed to seniors, now, these homes aren't going to be as large homes that those seniors might be interested in, but, you know, when people, families come in from out of town, perhaps, driving in, that there's enough parking available to those folks, and also an adequate place to put all the snow. So that's sometimes an overlooked aspect of the development, so keep those in mind as you further develop and solidify the plan.
Tim, you have. Yeah, on the tree survey, this is page L3 and L4, typically, on a tree survey, we see each tree that's listed, whether it will be removed or saved. We didn't see that on this tree survey, so we had to just look at your map and try to figure out which ones are being saved. So when you come back with your proposal, whatever it might be, I would ask, or we would ask, that you add on the tree survey, what is planned for each individual tree, whether it's to be removed or saved.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
Other comments?
I'd just like to wrap up from, and I, first of all, I represent, I'm speaking for myself as a commissioner here. I do not represent the commission board here, and I don't represent any developer or anything like that. I just want to say, this property will need to be developed, and I appreciate the community recognizing that, but we need to find something here that respects the will of the community. And I don't believe the proposal that's currently submitted respects the will of the community. We also need to respect the developer and the developer's rights. I would ask that when you come back, you, from my perspective, I'd like to see a development that's significantly less intense in terms of the housing. I'm particularly concerned to see how you can retain a much larger number of trees, particularly in natural tree stands, if you could group them together. And I'd still like to see what the alternative would be if you did R1H with an access road along the very north, and please go take a look at that other drive, and I would ask the homeowner to the north to do that as well, and see if that is a viable alternative. It certainly would be more in line with what the community would be looking for. May not be realistic, but let's at least take a look at it. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I wanted a couple things. Number one, on the snow push and extra parking, take a look at Hidden Creek, it's on North Territorial, right beside the Methodist Church. They've got parking in the middle, because you will need overflow, okay? If they're smaller ranches, great, that means the garages are small, there's fewer cars, there's fewer people that will live there, hanging on as latchkey if they're older people. You will have less vehicles. With respect to the deer, I had to take my dog to the vet yesterday because of another tick bite, because I live near the woods, so these deer are pesky. And I was talking to the ordinance officer in Beacon Hill yesterday, and a 12-point buck literally walked 15 feet away from us. So the deer are everywhere, they're nice to look at, but man, they're dangerous for us and our skin. This tree plot, I'm encouraged to see the fact that, at this level and stage, somebody took the time to map what was there. That encourages me. But I see the challenge to Commissioner Boyd's point on fewer units means we can probably save more of these, number one, and hearing what the residents said, because something will go in there, right? May not be 14 units. It'd be nice if it's ranches, because we have that need, but being mindful and a way to protect and reserve as many as you can. Just note that, so when you come back, to follow Commissioner Boyd's guidance, because it's very sound. People love the trees in this community.
I think we've offered the, look, if you haven't done so already, look at New England Corners, which is diagonally from your property, and that feeling of that particular site is something that I think emulates the character of the township, and that's sort of, you know, the direction that we would support. Anyone else? Okay. So what's your pleasure on a motion? Just need the recommendation.
I make a motion that we, the conditional rezoning of the vacant parcel at northwest corner of Ann Arbor Road and McClumpa Road, PC number 2576, to the R1, one-family residential district, be tabled for up to six months to allow the applicant to consider additional opportunities, as discussed among the planning commission this evening, and the feedback from the public during the public hearing.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Dorchevitz to table application 2576 for up to six months, subject to discussions and the planner's report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, good luck to you, and look forward to working together.
Members of the community, please thank you for coming and expressing your concerns and your point of view.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
That's yours.
It's your opportunity to escape.
Yeah, take it quickly.
Take it if you can. Okay, so we've got Pilot Fence. Moving on to new business, application 2575, 14903 Pilot Road from Great Lakes Fence. So, we have whose report?
Thank you, Chair Sobolski.
Sure.
This application is for additional fence height for the property located at 14903 Pilot Drive in the industrial district. The applicant is proposing to install an eight-foot height fence to enclose the existing truck well behind the building. The fence is proposed to be a galvanized, commercial-grade chain-link fence with a double-swing door. The fence will be closely aligned with the rear masonry wall, however, the materials would be visibly different. As of right now, the proposed height does not comply with the allowed height in the industrial district, which is six feet. So they're proposing eight feet, and the planning commission must determine whether the height of the proposed fence can be permitted. The proposed materials are permitted, however, we recommend that the chain-link be black powder-coated chain-link to provide a more finished appearance. The applicant has responded to that request and stated that, that the black wire, because they're proposing white privacy slats, the black wire might, it would possibly look more attractive to actually be the galvanized gray with the white. That's up to the planning commission to decide on that one. In terms of placement, it complies, no protective, for the requirement, no protective or security fence shall be built closer to the street than the established front building line, and the proposed fence location, which is behind the building, complies with that. And again, the planning commission at its discretion may permit alternative fence placements, heights, or materials, keeping in the spirit of this ordinance. So as proposed, the fence will remain set back at the rear building line. It's not anticipated that the additional two feet in height will be visible difference from the public right of way.
The applicant?
My name's Lee Luyett. I'm representing Great Lakes Fence Company and ERS, the property owner there. I noticed it was mentioned, you know, possibly using black vinyl-coated chain-link. The posts and the framework of the fence wouldn't be able to be seen from the outside of the enclosure with the privacy slats. And as for the eight-foot high, I think they, you know, they do emergency response, first responder training in this building, and they have some vehicles I think they may be keeping in the truck while they're, and it's, the eight-foot high is just to kind of shroud that, so people don't see it.
Is this, is this building right here?
Yeah, it's the truck well at the top-left, you know, that area.
No, down by, right there.
Right there, yeah.
It's a truck well.
That's the truck well there that they want to enclose. It'll just be sort of a L-shaped fence and gate.
That's at the back of that.
Yeah, that's the roadway there. It's not going to extend out that far. It'll be just slightly away, you know, from the building line.
But really, that's more of a back alley, right?
Yeah.
The main road is to the right.
Yeah, that's not Pilot Drive, Pilot Drive is here.
Right, straight off the road.
So it's not, won't be visible from the main road?
No.
Yeah. So what's your pleasure? What questions would you have?
Are we ready for a motion?
One question is, the planning recommendation is with the black powder coat, is there alignment and agreement to do that by the building owner, the applicant?
I don't think they, you know, they'd ever really thought about it. It isn't seen from the street at all, only from the back drive. The one thing that I think would look kind of odd is if it was black chain-link wire and there's white slats going through it, it really wouldn't look consistent. It might look kind of odd. I don't think the chain-link fabric would even be noticeable with the white slats in there.
Planners, do you have any recommendation for us on that? Would you be okay with the steel, given the white slats?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we ready for a motion?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the 14903 Pilot Drive Fence Edition for eight feet high, and that we recognize that the applicant's recommendation for galvanized steel be accepted as opposed to the black-coated chain-link.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to approve the application of 2575, subject to set conditions. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Application 2577, 15,000 Ridge Road, tentative and final site plan, and we have the planner's report.
Thank you, Chair Sobolski. The applicant is seeking tentative and final site plan approval for an additional five acres of outdoor storage. You saw the special land use for this expansion in August of 2025, which was approved. The site's located southeast of Ridge Road and Five Mile Road intersection, and has an existing industrial building and outdoor storage area. The existing outdoor storage area is 10 acres and was approved in 2023. As part of this, the special land use approval, the planning commission requested an administrative review was required to determine whether two heritage trees, trees 574 and 577, could be preserved in this five-acre outdoor site. McKenna and Spalding Detector met with the applicant to explore alternatives. It was discovered that relocating the storage area proved impractical due to significant grade changes to the south, and the type of materials being stored made the protective barriers for the trees really unworkable. It was determined that the trees could not be preserved without compromising the function of the site. However, the applicant does, so the applicant is proposing to remove a total of 14 trees, including the two heritage trees, and based on the required replacement calculations, that's 58.5 inches of new tree plantings are required. The applicant's going to be exceeding that by providing 66 inches of replacement trees. So the proposed outdoor storage area does meet the township's use standards and site development requirements for outdoor storage. No combustible materials will be stored, and the area will be exclusively used for DTE gas equipment. The applicant is proposing a six-foot berm along the south edge, which is consistent with the existing 10-acre storage area, and the site doesn't require a planting strip because it does not face a public street. However, the applicant is volunteering adding a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees along the berm, which also meets the 66 inches of replacement trees. And stored materials will not exceed eight feet in height, and a compliant access roadway will provide emergency vehicle access to the rear of the site. So given that the proposal meets the township's standards and the applicant has addressed natural resource requirements, tentative and final site plan approval is recommended, subject to the planning commission's acceptance of the proposed heritage tree removals and final engineering approval from Spalding Detector. That's my report, and the applicant is here, and I'm happy to take questions as well.
Engineering report?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. More, louder?
No, go.
Good evening. We have received a site plan supplemental for the outdoor storage prepared by web engineering. This is going to be a proposed expansion from the 10-acre outdoor storage that is already existing. This is brought to us as a temporary condition for a contract with DTE, and they're providing a stormwater will be tri-flow to a temporary proposed retention basin with overflow into the surface existing wetlands. Or the following are our observations and main comments based on the proposed site plan. The town chief or marshal might request a hydrant to access this side, to access the side that is closer than the. This is brought to us as a temporary condition for a tempor- for a contract with DTE. And their providing a stormwater uh will be chief flow to a temporary proposed retention basin with overflow into the surface uh existing wetlands. Uh, or the following are our observations and main comments based on the proposed site plan. Uh, the township fire marshal might request a hydrant to access this site that um, to access this, to access the site that is closer than the existing hydrant that is located approximately hundred feet west of the site. Um, the township fire marshal might also request a traffic circulation plan to show uh emergency vehicles access to the site. Um, regarding that the site is meant to be temporarily, we are recommending that the developer discuss a timeline with the township. Uh, so um, the township should be comfortable with that timeline um as it is to be intended to be replaced with a permanent building um as well as a permanent stormwater management system. Uh, the proposed site, uh per the engineer, the site soils are very favorable for infiltration and the area will function as a bio-retention basin as allowed by Wayne County. Uh, review and approval will be required from them to confirm that no additional detention capacity, a stormwater pretreatment will be required on site. Um, at this time, we didn't receive any calculations, uh so we're not able to determine if this, the system was sized properly for the development. And this has potential to impact the footprint of the uh basin. Uh, geotechnical reports shall be provided to indicate the existing soils will be able to infiltrate at the needed rate. Um, and then we'll also request that additional soil control measures uh we've provided between the proposed gravel lot storage and the retention basin. Um, based on the comment listed on our report, uh we are recommending approval of the final site plan uh with the condition that all the comments are addressed to the satisfaction of the planning commission and contingent on Wayne County's approval. Um, thank you.
Thank you. And the applicant is here.
Yes. Hey, good evening.
Hi.
Since we are proposing to uh extend the existing ten-acre storage lot with an additional five acres, so then uh Chalk Tower is currently in the building and they would have a contract with DTE for this additional five acres throughout, you know, through their, their lease period. And that is why we're calling it temporary condition. And as mentioned, you know, there is, where this uh storage lot is, you know, it is in an area where, you know, the, there is potential for future development, you know, the developer does own the entire hundred and five acres of property. And uh they are looking to, you know, develop in the future within, you know, past on the east side of this five-acre storage lot.
Are there questions?
Not, not so much a question, but, you know, we have permanent residents here that are trees that are gonna give up their lives to store temporary pipes and meters from DTE. And it's disappointing, okay? I do recognize the developer owns the land and they will probably develop it anyway, which is unfortunate. So I'd love to know where these new diameter breathtaking trees are gonna be located so we don't go through this exercise of killing trees all over again. Because we took our time as a committee, rightfully so, looked at the top of graphical maps, right? And just rotating what was supposed to be done in parallel to the, the ten acres with the five perpendicular, the terrain was no more challenging than what was proposed. So I will say I'm disappointed, right, that, that permanent residents are gonna give up their life to store pipes temporarily. That's just very disappointing.
Any other comments?
I uh needed to look something up. Uh, the last time I looked it up, the taxes weren't paid on this property. Do you know if the summer taxes have been paid?
Uh, I do not know. I, I don't know, I'm.
Can you, can you check that out tomorrow?
Yep.
You mean the, the guy that owns hundred and five acres isn't paying or?
The, on the uh
Testing facility?
Portion of it.
I thought we could never bring that up.
Well, I just did.
Okay, well then you've opened that door, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, you've opened that door.
Uh, I'm representing the developer and if we have not paid the taxes, we will make sure that we definitely get on that, that it's not a problem.
Okay.
They should have, they should have been paid. Um, and if they haven't been, um, we will make sure they get paid as, as soon as possible.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, so what's your pleasure?
I propose that the planning commission grant tentative and final site plan approval for the proposed outdoor storage area at fifteen thousand Ridge Road with the condition that all engineering items are addressed and approved by Spalding Decker prior to the final stamp.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to grant tentative and uh final site plan approval to twenty-five seventy-seven, subject to set conditions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm opposed.
Nope. Okay, opposition from Commissioner Ayes. But the motion passes, okay.
From two noes, right?
Two noes? Or did you?
No, I was a yes.
Oh. Did anybody else say?
Just one no.
One no.
Go, okay.
Yeah.
All right, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, application twenty-four ninety-three, the conditional rezoning extension. Go ahead.
Thank you. The um property at forty-seven hundred Ann Arbor Road, the um former Applied Fitness Solutions two-story building that is the subject of a conditional rezoning um is requesting a third extension um for up to ninety days. They previously requested a six-month extension um uh, I'm sorry, a two-month extension and then a um three-month um extension. So in total, this would still be less than a year um that they're requesting, which is um in keeping with other applications that the township has considered. So at this time, we would recommend um a motion to e- e- extend um up to ninety days to expire on February seventeenth. And that would allow the applicant to um finalize their proceedings in the Wayne County Circuit Court.
And I see the applicant is here. Did you have something to say?
Wait, Laura, did you say six months or three months? What'd you say?
Uh, ninety, ninety, ninety days.
So three, three months, okay.
To February seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. How are you? It's good to see everybody again. Um, you know, one, we're excited to be, you know, continue to do business in Plymouth Township. Obviously, I wanna talk about this application and obviously we have another application uh currently in front of the community. Um, I'll give you a little bit of the history while we're still, while we're still here, if that's okay. And then Rick Sable, who's here with me today as well, um, he can get into a little bit more of the legal nuances. The second time we had a public hearing on this application, what God brought up, um, we tabled it was for to, to achieve two things. Number one is to do a traffic study, which we've completed. And Laura, I don't know if you can speak about the traffic study, but the traffic study was completed to check different points on Ann Arbor Road and that was completed. The second part was, there was a lot of people in the audience who had their own special interest. They had their own special interest, in my personal opinion, if they didn't wanna see another car wash in this community. And they brought up the fact that there was interested parties potentially in this project. I think that's one of the reasons we tabled it. And the feedback that we got from the planning commission was, hey, go to Wayne County Circuit Court and get rid of this judgment on the property. And we've been working on that. We went to Wayne County Circuit Court and Rick, you wanna talk about the interested parties for a second, if you don't mind?
Yes. If you recall it, one of the meetings back in, uh, I think it was April, it's, issue came up is that there might have been interested parties when you read this nineteen eighty uh judgment that was entered into. Uh, we did title work and basically what happens is uh Elk Car Wash is a successor and interest all those properties. And we sat down with the township attorney uh and with staff uh from the township back in late May and went through that. Uh, then what happened is, once we got past that point, uh, we went to Wayne County Circuit Court and because it was a nineteen eighty judgment, it was out of the whole system. You couldn't even find the case number on it or anything. And so we had to turn around and get the court administration to turn around and pull it out of the files and put it into their e-filing system. That took all the way through the summer to be able to do. When we showed up here, I think it was, I think it was September when we showed up over here. And at that point in time, we had the case that was pulled out, we had a judge that was assigned to it. We turned around and scheduled a motion, we couldn't schedule the motion until it got assigned to a particular judge. We scheduled that motion, then albeit, just before the motion hearing was scheduled, is the motion was pulled off the docket. The judges, the, the judge that was assigned to the case turned around and says, well, I can't handle this case, we gotta reassign it. So then we were told, okay, you gotta wait, the, the, the motion is off of the docket. We have to wait until a new judge gets assigned. As I stand here today, even though that was more than thirty days ago, uh, we still don't have a new judge. So we're waiting and I figured when we asked for the ninety days that maybe somehow in the next few weeks, we'll get a new judge assigned. And then we'll be able to schedule that motion, have that hearing, and whatever happens with the judgment, happens with the judgment. And that's why I want to emphasize here, what we're just looking for is, is we gotta resolve that. The township attorney had mentioned that at the meeting, saying that you can't proceed until we resolve that, that issue with the nineteen eighty judgment in place. So we're not asking you today to go make a recommendation to the city council for the conditional rezoning request. That's not before you. It's not before the city council right now. What's before you is saying, give us time in order that we can try to resolve this and then at least have a fair and full public hearing with our application. And whatever is done is done at that time. So we may end up having to come back if, if I don't get that assignment. But that's the reason we'd be coming back. And I think you mentioned at the last meeting, we know how it's slow it can be in Wayne County Circuit Court and we might need multiple extensions, so.
You have no objection?
Yeah, go ahead. But I wanna, I wanna emphasize one thing. The one thing that was brought up multiple times that there's, there's, there's interested parties that have an opinion of what can happen with this property. The only group that has an opinion of what happens on this party is us and Plymouth Township. Those interested parties that was brought up was just not true. It was not factual information that was presented to this planning commission. And I'm happy to provide the title work and all that backup information. So right now, the only parties that would appear in, in the court system itself would be us and Plymouth Township. And hopefully Plymouth Township doesn't oppose lifting this judgment so we could come back to the planning commission and try to present a, and present a conditional rezoning plan. So I just wanna be clear about the nuances of what's taking place. And the information you had previously heard from people in the audience was not, was not accurate. So I just, I wanna make sure I made that, made that point today.
And I guess I can just follow up.
Is there any? Yeah, go ahead.
Emphasize that a little bit. What happened is when that judgment was drafted, it said, here are the other interested parties. And in the paragraph, it said, they're interested because they have an interest in the property. There were multiple owners in this whole parcel at that point in time. So when the title work came through and it says the successors and interest, it's all these people have sold off their interest and ultimately the sole owner of the property, and we went through that with the township attorney and the staff, you know, when we met back in, in May. So we, we were past that point. And if somebody were to appear before Wayne County Circuit Court, which they haven't, and, and we've notified people, it, they can make their argument, but, you know, nobody's even done anything, you know, there from that standpoint.
So, yeah, so there was, so hopefully that, because that, that interested party came up quite a bit in our two hearings. And there was people in the audience saying, we're an interested party. We provided all the appropriate notices to all the different parties that said they could be interested and they didn't show up for one reason, because they're not interested parties. The only interested parties is Plymouth Township and us as, as the property owner. So I just, I really wanna clarify that because I know that's been brought up many times to you guys.
I think we should set all this, the legal stuff aside because it's complex.
Yeah.
And there's more to it than um
And our attorney isn't here to counsel us.
But the question before us is, should we give them an extension? And I'm, I'm fine with giving them an extension. They, they deserve to have their day in court. And if they, if it got yanked away from the judge for no fault of their own, that's, you know, let's give them the extension. But there's, it's, there's some complexities to the legal arguments that are not, you know, when you're not really at liberty to talk about it.
Which is okay. So if you set the disorder in the court aside, which is your point, which I think is valid, it brings us right back down to the fact that we have a whole neighborhood that doesn't want this to be there. And I'm, I'm hoping to hear between last spring when Mr. Schukman was in here and now, have any discussions taken place with those homeowners to see what it would take to appease them to potentially maybe get them to reverse their strong feelings, which were against this eight months ago and we're, we're here.
But what I'm saying is, unless they prevail in court and get the uh judgment set aside, it's, it's
A moot point.
Doesn't matter, it's moot.
Okay, and I, and I would make one point, agreed, and I would make one point that without this judgment set aside, this property will sit like this for many years to come. So to even, no matter what the development ends up being on this property, that judgment needs to go away. So you've, so if the car wash does get denied, right, that's, that's a possibility.
You'll have your opportunity in court to make that case. You're trying to argue, argue that to this commission and it's not the right place to argue in.
It needs to be resolved.
Not at this time.
We can't resolve it here. Bob's point here is Dennis, and I agree with you.
We can't resolve it.
And it's, it, they should have their day in court.
Yeah. All, all I wanna make a point is, in good faith, we sat here and approved another location northwest of the township, which didn't have the same density, which made absolutely perfect sense, nor did it have neighbors that were against it and it was unanimously supported. So we've been very fair and very reasonable here.
So anybody else have a concern? Are you ready for a motion?
Is ninety, is ninety days sufficient?
I don't, my gut is no.
No. What do you think is sufficient?
Well, I'd rather, I'd rather do a hundred and eighty days if we can.
Yeah.
Well, what's, how many, how many days has it been extended? I don't wanna go over the typical year.
Five months.
That's my only concern.
Well, it's two, eight months so far from when they were first in here, yeah.
So that's why you've picked ninety days for the, because that would bring us to a year.
Yes, but the ordinance doesn't specify for rezoning applications, so the, the commission has flexibility in what you think is appropriate.
We do have the holidays.
It's up to you if you wanna do ninety days.
What's that?
Or do you want, I'm, I'm talking to the commissioner.
I'd go longer because otherwise we'd be back in here doing this again, I think, on the ninety-first day, to be honest.
What do you recommend?
Six months. Mr. Schukman asked for a hundred and eighty days and, you know, I, I'll sweat off our brow. He needs an extra three months from three to six.
Three months does seem, I think it's reasonable. It'd be three months over, no, I'm talking, you know,
Right, beyond the twelve.
Three months beyond
Yeah.
the year, you know, that's my point, which still seems reasonable because it sounds to me as a very complex case and odd things going on with, you know, can't find the file and all that kinda stuff.
December.
Right, December's a law court.
Right, right, right.
So, yeah.
Do four or six. Let's just do six.
All right, and get it done.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion, but first I wanna say we are only voting on the extension. We're making no comment about any of the testimony here. That's beyond, that's not our bailiwick. So only talking about the extension.
Right.
And if you do come before us again uh with a plan, it's a, it's a whole first start in my opinion.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So I move that we grant an additional extension of one hundred eighty days in order to account for the current status of the proceedings of Wayne County Circuit Court, where they are waiting for a ruling on a motion to vacate the consent judgment. This would make the um motion to extend the planning commission application number two four nine three for one hundred eighty days to expire on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Okay, move to e- extend until May seventeenth uh for application twenty-four ninety-three. Did I say?
Yep.
Well, to, okay, we approve the extension until May seventeenth.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you guys. Thank you so much.
That was, uh, Commissioner Pop. Okay. And then we have Plymouth Exchange.
Yes, this is another, um, extension request for the site plan. This is the southeast corner of, uh, Five Mile and Napier. And the applicant is still, uh, finalizing their approvals with Wayne County, so they cannot yet break ground. And with the, um, winter coming, a more realistic groundbreaking is going to be in the spring. So, um, their revised site plan was, uh, just approved, uh, last year, so they still have a whole nother year available for an extension request. Um, so we are, um, recommending that that be approved.
That the extension be approved.
Right.
And then, any, any discussion on that?
Sorry, how long is that for against 90 days or one, one year?
One, one year is what, is the...
Oh, oh, okay, because this is the first, first time.
Yeah.
So we would be extending by one year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't want to answer any questions.
Okay. Well, once you come up, well, so are, do you want to, do you want to give us any additional detail?
Yeah, absolutely. Cameron Cooper Jones Development, I think this is my third or fourth time in front of you all. Good to see you again. Uh, I had zero intention of coming back before you. Uh, our plan all along was go through the permitting process with Wayne County, Plymouth Township and Eagle. Unfortunately, in, in the goal was always to, to go through that approvals, have permits in hand, break ground in early to mid fall. Unfortunately, the approval process has taken longer than anticipated. And so now we're, we're kind of at the point now where, um, construction efficiency, if we were starting masquerading activities in December, January, February, March, about four months worth of masquerading on our, on our, um, land site. And just honestly with construction pricing as well, it just doesn't make sense. And so I'm partly here to ask for a year extension because that's the only option that I have. The reality is that we are, we have contracts in place, my team is ready to start as soon as, uh, the weather breaks in the spring. So call it April 1st, we will be ready to start onsite masquerading as well as the utility extensions that are required for our development.
Any questions from the commission?
So you have a plan for the building?
Yeah, we have 715,000 square foot building that was previously, we went through the public hearing, like, uh, site plan approval, so it's, it's seven, one single building, 715,000 square feet.
Just need an extension for the to, for this final site.
For the start of construction.
Okay.
What would the industrial building be used for? Is there a known architect or renter?
So, great question. So this is a speculative building and so we would build it and then lease it up. And so we've, have a little bit about, I see some new faces here, Jones Development, we are industrial development firm based in Kansas City, 12 of us. We've done industrial projects in 39 states, essentially coast to coast. We've done over 125 deals with FedEx, Amazon, DHL, you know, your class, class A industrial tenant across the country. So that's certainly an option based off past relationships, but I think based off feedback I've received here previously, I think manufacturing is obviously, we're in Detroit, makes a ton of sense, but we are open to, um, whoever's going to lease that space. But it, we will start construction on a speculative nature.
But you do a lot of warehousing and distribution and...
Exactly right.
Yeah.
Again, for those that may not know this, um, when they came back with their second proposal, they retained over 60% of the site is, is going to remain in its natural state, partly because some of it's wetlands, but, you know...
Yeah, I tried to spare some details, I know it's getting late, but it's 190 acres. Uh, we are going to leave about 100 of it, uh, in its natural state. And so originally we had a three-building site plan arrangement based off feedback we received from neighbors and feedback from planning commission, uh, we decided to just do one larger building.
And you moved that building east of its original?
We did, we put it right in the middle of the usable space.
Yeah. Good. So this is a good, this is a good, and we've approved it.
Exactly.
So it's just, you're just asking for these things.
Pretty friendly.
Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Yep.
You want to make it?
I can.
I, I can do it.
So, okay, well, I can do it.
Okay, go.
Uh, so, uh, this is, um, a motion to approve the one-year extension, PC 2493, or no, that's the wrong one.
Yeah, no, that's it.
2549.
Sorry. The first one on the list.
2549.
Okay. Well, then I was reading from the wrong one.
I'll, I'll go ahead and do it.
Go on.
Move that we, um, grant an extension of the, um, site plan approval for PC number 2459 for a period of one year to expire on November 20th, 2026.
Is there support or, okay, move by Commissioner Boyd, supported by Commissioner Callahan to approve the, uh, one-year extension for application 2549, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Good luck to you. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, down to miscellaneous business and communication, master plan update.
I just want to remind folks that we do have a study session, um, planned on December 3rd for the master plan. And, um, we also need to, uh, submit the 2026 calendar of planning commission meetings to the board of trustees. The only dates that we may want to consider not being the typical third Wednesday of the month would be, of course, December, so we'd be looking at December 9th, that's the second Wednesday. And then Thanksgiving is later next year as well, it's the 24th. So the third week would still be the 18th, or we could look at doing it the second week if you feel like this is too late in the schedule.
Okay, I just, I just pulled up November, so Thanksgiving is November 26th?
Uh, 24th.
Oh, am I in the right year?
We said we had a study session on, uh, Wednesday, on the 3rd?
Oh, 26th, yeah, sorry, 26th, yes.
Are we having the board of trustees on?
On the 2nd, right?
On the 2nd?
Yes.
Well, here it is. This is 26th, okay, I got it, November... Oh, okay, I, I got the right year up now, so Thanksgiving's on the 26th, but we would still meet on the 18th.
Unless you would like to change it and move it a week earlier.
We did, that'd put it on Veterans Day.
Let's keep it.
Eighteenth is fine.
Yeah, let's just keep it, the 18th, yeah.
Sure.
And then we still, we would still meet, uh, as we usually do in December, would be the second Wednesday, which would be December the 8th.
No, no. 9th, yeah, 9th.
December, what?
The 9th, it's the 9th, that's...
The 9th, that's, that's not a...
2026.
That's a Wednesday, yeah. So we have three meetings in December?
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yes, we have a full, regular meeting on the 10th. With two public hearings. The 10th.
The 10th, our next month, our next month meeting, it's two, it's the second week because of the holiday.
So we have the 2nd, the 3rd and the 10th?
Yep.
Yeah, I guess so. All right. Now there's a board of trustees.
Can you find a better month to do that?
Master plan study on the 3rd and regular PC on the 10th.
Okay. So I think there's general agreement to that schedule.
Okay, all right, we'll go with that schedule. We'll do, um, the full schedule and the submission deadlines and include it in the packet, um, for December. And if there are any other adjustments, like the first, we can make those and then on the schedule.
It doesn't fall, I didn't look at Easter, but usually there's not a problem.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, the 4th or something this year, so...
Okay, and anything with, uh, with the Jewish holiday, that sometimes, I think it's, it's September, sometimes one year we had a problem about that.
We, we will check.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll check that.
Okay, and then we have the planner's report, the monthly report. Anybody have a comment, questions on that?
On the master plan, um, last meeting I had proposed a, what I think we moved toward a kind of an introductory page for the planning, for the master plan. I did receive comments from several commissioners. Uh, I would ask that any of you that haven't commented, that want to, if you could get it to me in the next couple of days, I will put together a second draft incorporating those comments. We can, we can cover that in our December 3rd meeting. Okay?
All right.
Sounds good. Any other commission comment, comments? Okay, can we adjourn at 9:29?
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn the November planning commission meeting at, at 9:29 PM.
I'll second it.
Move by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Ives to adjourn at 9:29. All in favor, signify by saying aye.